Out there in the control room so that we can enter into.
Good evening, Littleton, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of April 11th, 2022. Our first item on our agenda this evening is Executive Session, so we will be entering into Executive Session and coming back out in about 30 minutes or so. So at this time, entertain a motion from our clerk, Mr. Nortos.
Move that the Select Board vote to enter into Executive Session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, and to convene an open session thereafter.
So declared, seconded, moved and seconded, seconded by Mr. Glavy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Does he roll call vote for this?
Roll call vote, Mr. Knox, thank you. As I said, we can go to Mr. Nortos.
Aye, yes.
Mr. Glavy?
Aye.
Chairs in favor. So folks, we'll be back in about 30 minutes. Thanks. Good evening. Welcome back to Littleton Select Board meeting for April 11th, 2022. As we do for each of our meetings, we'll open with the pledge. Mr. Mark, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Nortos. Okay, we'll get right into what's on the agenda. So we will, the town administrator will read some mail for us, then we'll get into department and board updates and requests. The town clerks on there for execute the annual town meeting warrants. And then we have the police department, we have to approve an intermunicipal agreement with down at Boxborough for animal control services. And then Parks, Recreation, Community Education has a request for a special municipal employee. Then we'll have an opportunity for public input and member updates. During public input, we just ask that you be recognized by the Chair, raise your hand to be called on, and when selected, just come to the podium, introduce yourself, and give us your address. And please keep comments to no longer than two minutes. And the public input section will last for 10 minutes. The next item on our agenda is appointments, and we'll be discussing the Affordable Housing Trust. The town administrator, the appointment of the town administrator's designate, am I right?
We're going to discuss it.
All right, discussion. Next up, we are discussing the process for annual town board appointments. We'll then get into a joint meeting with Finance and the Council on Aging. And we've got a couple of items on that agenda to include the review of the auditing firm, Roselli Clark &amp; Associates. We're going to discuss Article 20, which is the having to do with the property next door at 31 Shattuck Street. We'll also do some discussion relative to a contract manager at risk for public projects. We'll have a discussion about the review process for the town administrator. We'll get into annual town meeting, discussing bills of prior years. At about 8:20, we will be discussing outdoor dining. There's an update on that, and there's been some change, well, some extensions put in place by the Governor's Office, and we're going to have some discussion around that and what we should be doing in Littleton. Update on our, we're going to get an update on the RFP that went out for 12 Robinson Road, so we need to figure out how to move forward with that. The RFP did go out, we did get some bids back last week. And then we have a discussion on 550 King Street, and then we have some minutes to approve, and we hope to adjourn somewhere around 8:40, so start the clock. First up, if we could have the mail, Mr. Town Administrator?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. In the board's packet is a notice of filing from a public hearing for the Department of Public Utilities. The Department initiated an examination into its policies in order to enable the Commonwealth to reach its goal of net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050 in the role of Massachusetts Gas and Liquid Distributing Companies in achieving that goal. There are two hearings that are scheduled over Zoom on May 3rd and May 5th. The details are in your packet. And the other thing I want to mention is the Littleton Patriots Day Celebration on April 19th. The Historic Commission is looking for a representative of the Select Board to give the remarks. That will be on April 19th at 7:00 PM at Liberty Square.
So that's next Tuesday, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody wish to do that? I mean, historically, we have the Chair do it. I'm not certain that I'm going to be available to do it, so if anybody...
I always go or try to go anyways.
Okay. Want to take it?
Unless you would like to.
Nope. I'd like to, I just, I can't be certain I'm going to be available.
We have an Affordable Housing Trust meeting that night, unfortunately.
So you guys are up?
Uh huh.
Okay. So you're good?
Okay.
All right.
So I'll let them know that.
We'll, we'll coordinate Paul and I will coordinate him.
Okay. I'll just say that somebody will be there.
Yep.
Okay, great. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. That's Linda and John, is it Linda or John? It's Linda, right?
Linda.
Yeah.
Linda Stein, yeah, she sent the email.
Great, thank you. All right, so next up, we have farm board updates, and I think town clerk, what's up?
Basically, I'm here this evening with both the, sorry, I'm sorry, town clerk. Here with both the warrant for the election for May 7th, and the warrant for it, and the warrant for the town meeting, which I'm asking you to sign this evening so we can post it tomorrow.
Any questions from the board for the clerk? Pretty straightforward. We're good?
Cool.
Okay.
Ready for a motion?
A motion, please.
Move that the Select Board vote to execute the warrants for the annual town meeting to be held on Monday, May 2nd, 2022, at 7:00 PM, and the annual town election to be held on Saturday, May 7th, 2022, from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, both to be held at the Charles Forbes K Gymnasium, Littleton Middle School, 55 Russell Street, in the gymnasium, and to direct that the constable post said warrant forthwith.
Second.
Questions made by Mr. Nortos, seconded by Mr. Glavy. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
To unanimous. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Yeah, that's just for your coffee, somebody on a hot coffee. If possible, I know that a couple times in the past, maybe we could check with the moderator, if we get somebody from the schools maybe to do the National Anthem, to open the town meeting, or the high school band to play it, or something to involve the school, the kids.
We can inquire about that, sure.
It'd be great. Okay, next up, we have the IMA with Boxborough for Animal Control Services. Any questions relative to that? I don't see the Chief here, so.
No, the Chief.
Straightforward.
Yeah, the, the Chief has reviewed it. I don't mind handling this tonight. It just went up slightly as it does every year, but the services are well, they set well worth it to have, to continue the services with Boxborough for Animal Control.
Any questions?
Oh.
Entertained a motion?
All right. Move that the Select Board vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4A, to authorize execution of an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Boxborough for provision by Boxborough of animal control officer services to Littleton with a term from July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2023, at a cost of $31,165.
Questions made?
Second.
Seconded by Miss Napoli. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
To unanimous.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's the IMA. And next up, we have, let's see, Alicia here, just behind the podium, that's why I can't see her now. Parks, Recreation, Community Education?
Hello. Alicia Day, I'm the Director for Littleton Parks and Recreation. So tonight, I am asking if we would be able to obtain a special municipal employee exemption for Megan Bell. Megan Bell is currently a substitute teacher for Littleton Public Schools. However, she's worked for our department for Camp De Hadouan for many, many years. And this year, we would like to be able to promote her to Assistant Camp Director. And that would include hours in the spring to be able to get ready for camp. So she would have to work for us as well as for the school. The only thing that I do want to make sure that is understood is that the timeframe that she'd be working for the schools and the timeframe she would be working with us is absolutely separate. She would be working on different things. And she would also be working minimal hours just over the next few months until school ends and camp starts.
Excellent. Thanks, Alicia.
You're welcome.
Alicia, sorry. Any questions or comments of Alicia?
No.
That's pretty straightforward. And I love the fact that, I mean, Megan's a 2016 graduate of Littleton High School, she's a great kid.
She's great.
Yeah, I think she's an asset, and I definitely support this, so.
Move that the Board vote to authorize the town administrator to sign the disclosure by municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract as required by GLC 268A, Section 20B, by designating the position of the Assistant Camp Director with the Parks, Recreation, and Community Ed Department as a special municipal employee position.
Questions made, seconded by Mr. Knox. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
To unanimous, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Making up some time, yeah, this is, this is good.
Jake's dust now.
Oh, I'm not even paying attention.
Next up, we have an opportunity for public input, and as I mentioned before.
Okay.
Now, just please come to the microphone, introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name's Emily Murphy, 27 Shattuck Street. I've been a resident on the street for almost 44 years. First time doing a town meeting, so I'm just basically here to say that I'm concerned with the possibility of a senior center coming onto Shattuck Street. I'm not against it, but I believe if there's other options, if we have all the other options, my biggest concern is the traffic has increased, the speed has increased. We do have elderly people on the street. We do have active people like myself. And I was just wondering what is a solution and the future for parking and all that. I, you know, I live here every year, and I, I do like the town of Littleton, but I'm always growing and moving forward with my life. So again, this is my first time in the town meeting, and just kind of like to know a little bit more general knowledge. I'm not a guest, and I'm not pointing fingers. And the only other thing is I wish, as a resident and someone who's been on the street, if someone communicated to myself and my neighbors, because I, that's what I really truly believe, that Littleton is great at communicating. And I think there was no communication. But once again, I'm just going to say I'm a rookie to attend to a meeting. And yes, if it was a little bit more communication, that would be great. And every other aspect in this town, there has been communication. That's all I'm here to say.
Well, thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
And we're just residents like you that just volunteer time and try to do the town's business, so don't, feel free to come anytime, and don't be nervous, sir. This is for everybody, you know, just feel free to come.
We'd definitely be making more of a present.
That's great. As far as the communication piece, I think that because of the pace that the property became available and how far along the road, how far down the road we are or could be with developing this asset for the town, it was, you know, time was of the essence. I will, as the chairman, I'll take some of the blame. Communication definitely could have been better, should have been better. And I think we, we all admit that we can commit to being a little bit better at that and.
Can we try to approve upon that?
Absolutely, yeah. It's definitely, there's always room for improvement. We, we.
I appreciate you.
Yeah, we, I'll offer up. If, if the neighbors want to get together and have a conversation about this, I'll, I'll, I'll come by and we can have coffee or something like that, and I'm happy to meet with you all and, and, you know, tell you what I know about the, about the situation. It is on the agenda tonight. I'm assuming you guys are specifically talking about the 31 Shattuck Street.
Yes, sir.
Potential acquisition and the possibility of the senior center going at the site next to where the tennis courts are located right now.
Okay.
So that is on the agenda tonight. But I do appreciate you coming forward, and I know you have some of your neighbors here as well, so we'll give them an opportunity to speak as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Emily.
Mr. Jake, can I just make one comment?
Please.
Thank you, Emily, so much for coming forward and providing your insight and comments. One thing that I do encourage residents to do is you can sign up for e-Alerts, and you'll get an agenda for any board or committee that you're interested in emailed right to your email.
Is that something that you can approve upon? Because I, this is the first time I'm hearing.
Yeah.
And I think like a lot of us, we don't have the chance, the opportunity to come down here. We see a lot of things through Facebook and social media.
Right.
And I think that's great, but when it comes to some serious stuff going on, I feel like maybe we can, like if we put a sign up for, you know, excise taxes, real estate taxes, is there a way to communicate, or, you know, the law department puts, you know, a thing on our doorknobs when it comes to, you know, something they're approving upon about the water. I was just wondering if we could approve, approve upon to understand that there is an email out there, because like myself, if I was a newcomer to the town, I might not be aware of that.
Right.
So that's, I appreciate you speaking up and letting me know about that. But just once again, I kind of am a rookie, and if I was a newcomer to the town, I'd like to know how to get all the information about the town.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Emily. I'm actually going to go with the, the town clerk.
Diane Croory, 74 King Street. Thank you. As you are aware, on March 28th, I came before you and read a letter on behalf of many of the town, town hall staff, and as an elected official, would not be retaliated against as a regular hired employee might have been. I was wrong. First, the night of the 28th, I received the following email at 10:09 PM. Hi, Diane, thank you for your letter tonight. Just wanted to point out, it was erroneously addressed to the Board of Selectmen. Please address any future correspondence to the Select Board using its proper name. Second, a text was sent shortly thereafter, which read, whoever came with the idea to address the Board in support of Anthony tonight, should have thought about it, should have thought about the divisiveness it would create in town hall. So much for Together We Can. And the next text was sent to the Friends of the Littleton Veterans on April 7th at 11:34 PM, of which I am a member. Sharing a link to the Select Board meeting from March 28th, 2022, where a member of your group reads a letter in her capacity as a town employee openly criticizing the Select Board members, who I may remind you found legislation that would support the town providing funds to support the VFW, spearheaded the renovation of Edgar P. Romly Veterans Corner, and are preparing to renovate the World War I monument. You can't have it both ways. And I feel you may need to rethink either your membership, which means me, or your relationship with the town. I felt totally retaliated against and went immediately to HR and expressed my concerns for this retaliation. I have had to retain counsel due to my fear of being further retaliated against. Further, Ms. Napoli is now targeting my immediately, my immediate family. It is for this reason I am here tonight and asking for Ms. Napoli's resignation. She cannot try and silence people and try and intimidate them any longer. She continues to do it all the time, and I'm asking for your resignation, Ms. Napoli. Thank you.
No, that's all right. I appreciate that. Honestly, through the Chair, if I may, I'm speechless to say that, you know, Ms. Croory and her family feel retaliated against. And I don't want to get into specifics about the actions that her family specifically have taken against me in my capacity as an elected official over the years. So certainly, if you feel the need to retain counsel, Diane, go right ahead, and we'll go through the normal course. I am categorically not stepping down from this board. It's just not an option and not something that I'm going to entertain. So I appreciate your, your comment and your request, but it's not going to happen. Thank you.
Hold on, Kristen. You go ahead.
John Popolo Jr., 24 Shattuck Street. In regards to number 31 and the senior, or the proposed senior center, we're wondering how LLB was chosen as the architects for this project, and if any other sites were looked at for the proposed center.
Okay, so again, this is on the agenda later in the evening.
But we get to speak now. We don't get to speak after.
Fair point. But the, these questions will be answered during, during that time. And to Ms. Napoli's point earlier, these, these are things that have been on the agenda. We've been working with LLB for several years and looked at a number of different sites. The opportunity came available when the property came on the market. We didn't, we went through the, the normal course of a real estate transaction. We put in a bid like a private potential homeowner would, or buyer would. We did not win the bid. We sought counsel on what was available to us from an eminent domain possibility, friendly taking. The owner of that property was extremely open and stands to benefit if the town does purchase his property through eminent domain. And the other question as far as when we, when we specifically.
Were.
Secure the services.
Well, you really didn't answer how was LLB chosen for this particular project.
So anything that we do when it comes to any kind of contractual.
Isn't that, doesn't that have to go out to bid or something?
It all did go out to bid, sir. It did go out to bid.
Okay, we are unaware of that.
Well, I, as, as much as I think that we can do better at communicating, I think everybody's complicit and needs to do better at paying attention to what's going on around town. And we, we try to do the best that we can with our website and updating things on the website so that people can pay attention. All of our meetings are televised. There's a lot of communication that does go out through Facebook and Twitter from the town side, as well as any number of social organizations.
Okay.
That share is sometimes erroneously, sometimes accurate.
In regards to where other sites looked at for this possible project?
Yes, we, we looked.
It's part of the presentation.
Multiple locations, yeah. It's part of the, all of this information is on the website.
And it's going to be.
It's part of our, it's part of our agenda this evening as well. So, and that, all that information, all those questions will be hopefully answered. But again, if, if some of those questions aren't answered, feel free to reach out to any one of us. I'll put myself out there. I'm happy to give you my cell phone number, and you can reach out to me directly and.
Are you intending to look at, have questions after the presentation's made, too?
Yeah, we, we, that's, that's a great point. Thank you, Mr. Glavy. We can, we can also, this is the opportunity for, for public input, but when we do have something on the agenda, it's at our discretion if we, if we do want to, if we see that there's people here that are interested in, in speaking to the, the subject matter, we can allow for public comment at that point as well. Now, I'll get you, Megan.
Hi, my name is Carol Monk-Popolo. I live at 24 Shattuck Street. I'm a lifelong resident. Some of our concerns also, has there been an official study of the effects of the increased traffic to Shattuck Street? And has there been an official study of the effects on the neighborhood to, to where 31 Shattuck Street is being proposed? Because as I understand it, it would not change the zoning, but we live right across the street. And although you have looked at other areas, this was never one where you thought, well, we could do Shattuck Street. Let's go talk to the neighbors. None of us were ever consulted. I'm also wondering why there's only two minutes allotted to each person in this, and that the discussion is before your meeting that will discuss what you want to put on the warrant, not afterwards, when you've heard us and when we can hear what you've now decided. And, and it's going to take me a lot personally, take a look at me, going to take me a lot to come to every single meeting. And I will.
Okay.
As bad as it is. Okay, Joe? Okay, Paul, you grew up with me. So, did you have any consideration prior to suddenly having this on the market about coming to the neighbors and saying, you know, there's a thought that if we can somehow put it there, what do you think?
So I'll just leave a couple of comments, and one of them, one of them is going to be the same comment that I just gave John. It's, this is on the agenda. It has been on the agenda a number of times. It's not like we all of a sudden, poof, out of, out of, out of thin air decided we should.
But 31 just came up.
But we didn't put it on the market.
No, 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 but that's what I'm saying. You know, if, if it wasn't on the market.
I gave you your time. If you, you're, you're asking the answers to some of the questions, so if I could, please. The 31 Shattuck became available. One of the proposed sites that we had looked at was the tennis courts. It was one of the proposed sites that we looked at for the library as well. And at the time, there was not an appetite to get rid of the tennis courts. We've got some vehicles in place that we could potentially place a, a better facility for the entire town for tennis courts. So all of the pieces of the puzzle is being looked at, and there's a perception out there by some, and it's being spread by a few folks, that we're taking that house. We're not taking the house. The house would remain. It would still be a residence, and it would be, would be using the tennis courts and some of the setback to the side of the driveway. So it, the, all of this information is available. It's all been discussed, so I don't really want to read it when it's on our agenda.
Right, but if it's, you can have it as a house, but then who would buy it with everything around there? And then if it's made into a nonprofit.
Houses are selling at hundreds of thousands of dollars over asking price in Littleton right now.
Which is, yeah, and that's ridiculous that you're getting that much. But if you end up with something across the street from where you are, and you look out your window.
So the other, the other item that you had mentioned was, had we looked at the increase in, in traffic and whatnot? The, the services are being done at Shattuck Street right now. So where, it's, it's like the library was built, the library was here, so we didn't, we didn't.
When we moved here, there was Pine Tree Park. So every single time you have increased something here, traffic has increased, and no one's done anything about it. They go, people go up the wrong way up our street.
That's, that's not something we can control, but.
No, but I'm just saying, so now you're adding in one more thing to what was never there. And, and patience can be worn on the person who lives there.
Understood.
Sorry.
Thank you. No, don't, don't apologize. Thank you, Carol. Megan?
Megan, 428 Shattuck Street, and I'm just going to ask, ask a couple of questions as well regarding 31 Shattuck Street, because when I look out my window and I sit in my front yard, that's exactly what I'm looking at. And I'm just trying to get myself up to speed, because I've been really out of the loop with town stuff. But I heard a couple of things. One was you had just mentioned to Carol that the, the current Council on Aging exists here now. But the idea, I think, is to think, you know, not be short sighted, think about the future, and that there's, you know, Gruskowsky's is, is building a 55 and over, and there's going to be a lot of senior housing that's coming up. It seems that the future of seniors, us, like the younger people now are going to grow up, and we're going to be using a senior center or Council on Aging. I think a little bit bigger, I don't want to limit us. And one of the things I heard you say was that there were time was of the essence to get this property by eminent domain. I think earlier when you were saying that you didn't alert the neighbors because time was kind of of the essence. I just don't want it to be.
I think, I think I just want to correct you there.
Yeah.
I said time was of the essence. I think it's just a matter of, everything was moving pretty quickly.
Mm-hmm.
The house won on the market, and we had looked at the tennis courts, but didn't think that, we, we thought we were somewhat restricted by the property.
Yeah.
So that's why when that became available, we said, well, if we could grab some of that property.
Right.
Then.
It feels.
We had to act quickly.
Yeah.
And we had to get our offer in.
It feels.
They were accepting offers on a date certain, and we frankly had to move pretty quickly. I think we actually had a special meeting to decide whether or not we wanted to do it.
It feels a little rushed. It feels rushed in, in that aspect, because that property came available. It feels rushed in that aspect, because that property came available, and you guys acted on it really quickly, which I understand totally. And I want a wonderful council on aging. I want a great senior center. But I am worried, what happens if... And I have a question too about just logistics. So, the town meeting's on May 2nd, and it requires a two-thirds vote. Does that mean that we're not gonna be voting on this at May... On May 7th at the town elections? This is gonna be on the floor at town meeting, right?
Right.
And so, what happens if the town doesn't vote to move forward with this? But tonight, we vote, or you guys move forward with the $700,000. And... But what happens if town meeting doesn't... What happens to that house? It goes back to the owner. So, it was a benefit to the owner for the town to take it, but it's not gonna... It's a risk, because what if town doesn't approve this? Then he's stuck putting it back on the market again?
Yes.
Okay, and then will some...
All risks that he's aware of.
Yeah, but also, will that be a worry for any potential future buyer who may not want to get something that might be next to... The town now has their eyes on that area, so now that might have messed everything up with any potential future buyer. And I'm very interested in having a family. I bought the property in 2006 because it was a neighborhood with families and residential properties. And one of the things I think I heard in the FinCom meeting was that it might go to a nonprofit, which makes me think that maybe the house, if it's... If you guys are using all of like the land and taking it up to the driveway, and you're... They're not gonna have a driveway or much. It might be rezoned to a commercial property. Is that possible?
Nothing we've discussed.
Okay. Well, that was another concern, is if it gets rezoned, just like if there's a ZBA variance, usually the neighbors have an input. And I just wanted to know, how much are the neighbors gonna have an input with all of this?
It's never... That has never been on the table. The only thing that's been on the table is if we acquire it, the only changes that would potentially be made is redrawing the property lines so that we could put the senior center on the tennis courts and have enough room to fit it appropriately.
Okay.
In order to make that piece of property adhere to our zoning bylaws, we... Frankly, John is using land behind his house that is not his property. He clears it. He landscapes it and looks lovely. And that's our land. So, what we do is just on registered deeds, we just redraw the line so that that lot would still meet our standards. So, maybe somebody heard something about zoning or changing lot lines or something like that. I don't know, Megyn.
I heard the term nonprofit could go in there.
I mean, I guess a nonprofit could buy a house next to me, and it... It happened on Newtown Road, where there's a, you know, a home on Newtown Road, there's a home on Corner King and Air. So, that can happen in any neighborhood in Littleton, Friday.
Can a nonprofit go into a residentially zoned home? I didn't know that. Okay, so I... The... I'll just close with, I hope that you do communicate with the neighbors and get us involved, because we do have a lot of concerns. I mean, we... It's right across the street, and it's a big thing that I think I would rather be... Let's take a lot of time, and I really want to hear more about repurposing existing buildings like the one we're in right now. Because I would also highly encourage you and the Council on Aging in Littleton to visit the Westford Senior Center on Pleasant Street. I go there for... Did you have hearing screenings? And it is a beautiful repurposed old building. It's an old school that they renovated, and it's gorgeous. And I... It makes me want to be 65 right now, so I could go there. So, I would love to see something like that in an existing building. So, that's my... That's all for me. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time. Mr. Sanders has had his head in it for a while.
George A. Sanders, 672 Great Lloyd, Littleton. Mr. Chairman, members of the Select Board. I want to speak to you about a couple of things here. One, I apologize to the resident on Shattuck Street here, because I think that whether you were taking it by hostile or taking it by friendly of 31, you should have sent a postcard to the resident and let them know that the town was interested in that. However, talking about the tennis court, when I was the chairman on the COA for 10 years, we talked about building a senior center back then, and I said to use the tennis court to put the center over there. So, this is something with the tennis court that's been going on for a long, long time with regard to people making comments in the past about that. I watched a little bit of the FinCom meeting, and Mr. Wilson was very adamant about the fact that, you know, they was trying to work with the Select Board here with regards to what was gonna be done with regards to 31 over there. And like has been previously mentioned here, that you were just gonna redraw the boundary lines over there where that you could sell that property once again. I think that the people of the town of Littleton, and especially the seniors, they have been waiting for a long, long time. And we need to get this done, and I'm looking forward to hear what LLB has to say here tonight with regards to this particular site over there. I know that we have extra dollars that's in reserve, and we're looking to go into asking on this article to give the authority when all the pieces fall in place before the next town meeting from May to October. If the pieces fall in place and they have the authorization to go, then they can submit for a construction loan to start building the senior center over here. And I look forward, I had a meeting with the member of FinCom, the treasurer, and also the finance director with regards to the article, I believe it's article 7 or 12, with regards to putting the article in there for the loan. And they had thought that perhaps maybe the selectman amount of the 10 million may have been sort of kind of on the low side. So, they wanted to bump it up, I think about a couple million to 12. And it still will be under delay in terms of funding. They didn't feel that it was a smart thing to go back to the people of the town and say, "We made a $2 million goof here." And they thought maybe if you don't need it, you don't use it. It's as simple as that. And I think that it's high time that we take and do the right thing here when we're going forward here with regards to whatever the town is doing. You need to communicate. Sufficient communication is 50% to the solution of a lot of problems. We just need to take the time. I realize that it was $11 with regards to grabbing hope to this. Now, one thing, and I'm gonna finish up here, one thing I think that we need to give the gentleman or lady, whoever owned 31, a little bit of credit. Now, if they agreed to sell it to the town, you didn't force them, because they have the right to go to court if they think that you're cheating them or you're beating them out of the property. They have the opportunity to tell the truth about what happened. And from what I understand, he agreed to go along with a friendly taking of this property. And that's critical that we need to make sure that the resident know it's a friendly taken. It's not hostile. And we need to be clear and honest with the people here, and that's what I've heard. And Mr. Chairman, I want you to tell me, is this a friendly taken?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Delpiori.
Gerard Delpiori, this thing on. Gerard Delpiori, 59 New Estate Road. I was looking at the proposed town warrant. It looks like there's another plastic bag ban article coming up, and I would like to present some research I did on the relative environmental impacts between paper and plastic. And one of the more interesting facts you find is in terms of impact, plastic is actually better. And the reason is, it is so light, there's so little material in there, that when you look at what it takes to turn a tree into paper versus what it takes to turn natural gas into plastic, it's actually less impact in terms of carbon, water, chemicals, and energy to make the plastic than the paper. And I'd like to present this information to the board for your review. And if there's a link, I can send it electronically.
Sure. Terry.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, if I can get a... And also, is there any text to the proposed article? It was just... Right now, it's just a placeholder in the warrant.
Yeah, so if I may, the warrant article is non-binding. It's just...
Oh.
They submitted it wrong. So, all it says is ban plastic bags. So, the moderator can actually skip over that article. So, right now, it's irrelevant.
It's not in proper form.
It's not in proper form.
Fair enough, but I would like to present this in many ways, just to own it.
Yes, we'll definitely circulate it and put it in the files.
Yeah, and if you need any... If you have any questions, feel free to ask me on it.
We will. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to member updates. Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Still others?
Nothing for me.
Yes.
So, I just... So, we had a group of volunteers come together this weekend to work on the Nagog Hill Orchard cleanup. And I just wanted to give a special thanks to Tom Clancy, Jen Clancy, Sarah Seaward, Rick Finley, and Amy Tallo Lewis, who helped coordinate volunteer efforts for that. What were... What the work that we specifically did was to remove some of the cuttings that had been left behind by the pruning, and just get that wood compiled into separate burning piles, and also move towards specific designated locations on the property for later removal so that we can prepare to mow the grass and maybe apply some pesticides if we have the budget for it while we're waiting for results from the RFP to come in. So, I know there was some... People were asking kind of what was going on at the orchard, but it was really nice to see a lot of people come out and support that endeavor. So, I just wanted to acknowledge those people and say thank you for your help. That's it.
Excellent. Including Mr. Glavy.
Ah, and Mr. Glavy was there.
I can tell by the way he walked in here today that he is.
Yeah, I logged my time on Saturday as well, and I'm... I think I'm probably in the company of most town residents, especially if they have the experience to say, "I like owning the orchard. I like looking at the orchid. I do not want to pick up the prunings of the orchid." But it's... It was a good come-together moment for, you know, various residents from the town. And it's just a step along the way of getting us to the place of, hopefully sooner than later, having our next tenant agricultural use taking over the orchard. And kudos to our chair of our working group, Cindy Napoli, for providing good leadership and keeping us on task.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've just got a couple of items. One is, there's a blood drive tomorrow at the high school that's being put on by our National Honor Society. It is from 8:00 AM until 1:30 PM, so tomorrow, Tuesday, April 12th, at Littleton High School, 56 King Street. It's... Mass General is hosting it, so I'm not gonna give you the whole link right now, because nobody's gonna get it. But if you do Google Littleton Mass General Blood Drive, I'm sure that you can register. I believe you can attend and try to do a walk-in as well. So, that's from 8:00 AM to 1:30 at the high school, and our National Honor Society is putting that on. Also, I had the pleasure of attending Cinderella this weekend up at the high school. The Littleton Drama... Littleton High School Drama put on Rodgers and Hammerstein's Cinderella the Musical. And I literally went to all four shows. Kind of weird, but it was wonderful. I mean, the kids were fantastic, every aspect of it, the set design, the music, and it was...
The direction.
Interesting. I... You know, I don't want to toot... My son was the director, but he also hired Nicole Burke, who was a Littleton resident, to be his musical director, and Lexi Rock as the choreographer. So, it was all Littleton kids that were involved in pulling that off. And the high school students were amazing. It was really a tremendous show. And so, I just wanted to take my hat off and offer some kudos to everybody that was involved and to everybody that came and supported the kids as well. All right, so, feel-good stuff. Moving on. So, appointments. Affordable Housing Trust, Mr.?
Yeah, just... So, there's just a couple of updates. There's the... I know there's some question that's been raised to our office as far as the town administrator or might designate to the Affordable Housing Trust. And Matthew and I spoke about this last week. Right now, we actually don't have a vacancy with the town administrator, the designate is that's... Matthews has that position. So, we... From our understanding, as Millie McGovern has resigned that position, so what Matthew's gonna do the next time at the Housing Authority's meeting is accept Millie's resignation. They'll reappoint... They'll appoint Matthew as their designate. He'll resign his position as the TA's designate, and then at that point, there will be a vacancy. So, it's... I know Anna Houston's very interested. It's just, we don't have a position right now, and I did speak with her today. So, I just wanted to provide the board an update with that.
Okay. Thank you.
When that does transpire, when... With the Housing Authority and then we end up having a vacancy for your appointment, can we publicize that?
Sure.
Like, put it out to the public, just to see who else out there might be interested in joining?
Instead of just shuffling the cards on the deck?
Yeah, I just have concerns. We already have two members of the planning board on the Affordable Housing Trust. That would create three members. I just... I want to put it out to the public and see if there's anybody else that would be interested in joining.
Yeah, fair enough. We can do that, sure. Matthew, when's your meeting?
It'll be the first Wednesday in April, or in May now.
In May, okay.
So, I'd like to...
All right, so as soon as he does that, does a resignation, then I'll post something on the website. Give it a couple of weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you're all right with that, do you think? Yeah? Okay.
Send that out. Okay, sure. Good idea. Thank you.
That's the fourth, okay.
Any other questions?
May the fourth be with you.
And then it's that time of the year where we start thinking about the annual...
Right.
Town board appointment process. So, we've prepared a notice that will go into the newspaper, seeking residents interested in being appointed. The notice will be posted on our website. That's up there with all the vacant positions. And then we're looking for... To schedule the two June meetings for appointments, for interviews and appointments. So, the quicker we get this out, we can let the boards know that applications will be due by May 20th.
May 25th.
May 25th, thank you. So, then the boards can make their recommendations or their reviews for the Select Board.
If I may, Mr.?
Go ahead, you're on the chair. You're on the board.
Yeah, no, thanks. Sorry, Mr. Wilson. If I may, I would think it would be helpful if we put out some information about what the committees do and what the boards do, how often they meet, because I think that we take for granted that...
Everybody knows.
Everybody knows, and they don't. So, if we can somehow come up... I think at one point, we actually had like a little blurb about each committee. This might have been before your time, Mr. Insaldi, but if we can kind of put that together as we put the notices out there, I think it would be helpful to the public.
Yeah, I think that would be something we...
I think I...
Probably solicit that from each one of the... Each one of the boards have some of their members kind of come up with their take on what...
Well, you know what I... And actually, in the past, what I've done, Chuck, is I took it right from the town website.
Commission.
The description, and I just kind of put it into blocks, you know, organized it that way.
Appreciate your volunteer doing that again.
No, I have it somewhere. I just need to find it.
We could also embed within the, within the title, like, you know, a hyperlink. Yeah, a hyperlink to the website with actually go right to that.
Yeah, exactly.
Learn more or something, you click on the...
Correct.
Yeah, that would be the easiest way. I just think it would be helpful.
Yeah, we can do that.
If people don't know.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that?
We can do that.
Sorry, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Gary Wilson, Chairman of Finance Committee. I just noticed if, if that's the current version, I'm not sure if you're aware that Mr. Champney gave his resignation off of FinComs. That would be a position you would need to...
We want to advertise for, and that's our appointment, Mr. Champney, right?
Yeah.
Your appointment and he's our appointment?
Correct. That would be a name, that would be a position that we have to add.
We want to advertise.
Okay, yeah, we were not aware of that.
Sorry.
But that's okay. This is still in draft version, so we have plenty of time to, we'll double check with the board on that. Thank you.
I have a question. In the interest of streamlining the process, if we have a non-contested seat and a recommendation from the board, do we even need to interview? Like, I would say that would be absolutely optional because it always takes us three or four hours to go through all of the interviews. It seems like if there's, it's uncontested and the board wants that person. I don't know why we would say no.
I like the idea of making it optional because somebody might want to get to know us.
Well, that's fine. I absolutely encourage them to come in, but let's not insist, you know?
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
All right. So are we good with number five, Mr. Insaldi?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
This, after 7:10, so we're good. Joint meeting with FinCom and the Council on Aging. Looks like we've got a quorum of each, a little form?
Yes.
Now it's hiding on me. All right, good deal. So...
Yeah, so the first thing is, Alicia's going to introduce the CPA firm of Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates, who will be doing our, the next three years' audits for FY '22 through FY '24.
Good evening, Honorable Select Board. I'm excited to introduce to you Tony Roselli, CPA, CGMA, Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates, who has been selected to audit for us. His firm is very accurate. I think will help with a lot of controls, a lot of different things that kind of need to be overseen in the office to improve the town of Littleton.
Welcome, Mr. Roselli.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. It's been a crazy 12 or 18 months in the audit cycle. We had CARES and we had ARPER, and my phone has not stopped ringing. I know Alicia was trying to get me out here in December, and I said, there's absolutely no chance. I, my kids haven't even, can't even, they have to make an appointment in my scheduling book to see me. So, so this is really the first opportunity. So I apologize for any delays in that process. This is really the first opportunity. I've had to kind of breathe, and we had a great day today. It was a nice ride out here, no traffic. So, but we've been around, first of all, I'm, I've been doing audits of municipality, municipalities since 1984. I worked, I graduated from Bentley College. I got hired by one of the bigger firms, international firms. They're Deloitte now. At the time, there was Tush Ross, which merged. And they threw me right into the municipal field, to my dismay. But it's been, it was kind of lucky, you know, so, because I turned it into a pretty good practice for myself. In 1989, I spun off with another person I was, got acquainted with at Tush Ross, and we started this practice that's been around for over 30 years now. So with my prior experience and this experience, I've been doing this for a long, long time. I know I don't look it, but I've been doing it for a long, long time. And we audit right now about 80 cities and towns in Massachusetts. We're one of the top two or three in terms of just quantity of cities and towns. Cities as big as Fall River, towns as small as Peru, which has about eight people in it. And it's, it's really, you know, the full gamut. Littleton is kind of right in the wheelhouse. We have a lot about this size with this sort of demographics. In fact, I think we audit most of the towns in the surrounding area. I think we do Air, Stowe, Boxborough, Dunstable, Groton, Shirley, Pepperell. So we've got a lot of them right in this area. So we're kind of familiar with some of the things going on here. There's a lot of, there's a lot of store, you know, infrastructure that's happening in this whole area. A lot of grants and bonds that are coming in to, to, to create that infrastructure. So I'm really, we're really familiar with all of that. And, and like I said, we've been doing it for a long time. I worked in Medford with Alicia, worked prior to that in Gloucester. So, so we've worked together a little bit. I know she's worked with all the firms that do this. So I'm honored to have been selected amongst all the firms that she has worked with. So that's my, that's my intro. I don't want to keep you guys here all night because it sounds like you have a busy night. And if you have any questions, please, please put them forward before you make a decision.
Great. Any questions on the board? Comments?
I don't think, no.
Yeah, please.
Okay. Nice to meet you. Welcome aboard. One feature that we've had with some of the different audit firms over the years that I found value is, in addition to the, you know, the kind of stated approach, as you have it here, is that the audit firm with some communication with the finance team, Finance Committee, Select Board, Administration, get the, target a couple of areas of our, of our functions, operations that we may want a bigger, deeper drill down into. You know, for instance, years ago, we had a problem with one department that had a enterprise fund, and we got a little bit out of, you know, out of whack on that. And so we, that was a focal point. We've had other departments where there were problems, large and small. And, you know, and we, through communication, you know, the auditors got the message early on and made that a, you know, part of their function. So I don't know where did Alicia go or whatever, whether that was something you'd considered or talked about. And I welcome anybody from the, you know, the FinCom, et cetera, if you've got ideas of what might be a good, you know, a good target operation that's...
Oh, yeah, through the honorable chair. So when Tony does do the audit, he usually comes out and does a presentation, tells you what his findings are, his recommendations. And what I really love about that is they're usually not a bad critique, it's how we can improve. And that's really what's important to me.
Constructive.
Yes, I mean constructive criticism to bring up the quality for the citizens of Littleton, and that's all I want to do. And I believe that Tony has that expertise and quality to get us there.
I don't doubt that, but I think...
I think the question you asked is if we do a drill down into a department. And, yeah, that's, that's, so we would sit down with FinCom, Town Manager, Alicia, and are there any areas of concern?
Right.
You know, so the goal is that over the term of the entire contract, which I believe is three years, three years, that you've looked at several areas over that. Obviously, you can't do every area in the first year because the typical audit does not really say, go down and drill down. It's kind of like, it's for bonding, it's for the federal government, it's for the state. It's really not to go in and look at departments. But those are very important. I think it's value-added, and it's certainly something I would encourage. So we would probably sit down and say, hey, are there areas of concern? Are receipts dropping in this area? Do we know why? You know, could there be an issue there? Are things not getting turned over time? Are contracts not getting done properly? So those are the types of things that we would certainly encourage and, and request you to be involved in that process.
Okay, thanks.
Any comments or questions from board members?
No.
Appreciate it. Look forward to working with you. And get the endorsement of Town Administrator and Oasia.
Administrator, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I think we're ready to move forward.
All right. Move that the board vote to authorize the town administrator to sign the audit letter with the Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates for the fiscal years 2022 through 2024.
Second.
It's moved and seconded by Ms. Napoli. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Janice, thank you very much. Look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
All right, good deal. So continuing with the joint meeting with FinCom and now the Council on Aging, right?
Yes.
This is specifically about the annual town meeting, Article 20, which has to do with 31 Shattuck Street and the project with L.L.B. You're rolling. Come on in, Brian.
They need a table.
Is the one in the back, no?
I'll start. Thank you, everyone, for having me. My name's Brian Forz and with the Vertex Companies. We're the owner's project manager for the town of Littleton. We offer and serve as kind of the conduit between the town and the designer of L.L.B. and their consultants. And in the event that a construction project happens, we can transition to the conduit between not only the designers, but also the general contractor or the construction manager. We're here to provide you an update on where we are in the project for what we were tasked, which started out as a space needs study and ultimately has now transitioned into a senior center, new venue here on Shattuck Street. With me here is Brian Valentine of L.L.B. Architects, and he's going to provide to you some slides, which I believe you have here, to show everyone the update. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, before Brian starts, so just to answer a few questions that were asked earlier in the evening. This was a study that actually started in 2018. So we did have an RFP process, of which there was a number of firms that was selected. And L.L.B. was the firm that we ultimately chose. Before we even went out with them, we had to get on Vertex, which is the owner's project manager, which in any time you do any type of construction project in Massachusetts general laws requires that we have an OPM on, on board, who looks out for the best interests of the town. He's the construction expert. We're municipal experts. So this has been a long time coming, and we're going to go through some slides on how this evolved to where it is right now.
Thanks, Anthony.
Yeah, thanks. So...
Welcome, Brian.
Thank you. Good to see everybody again. So, next slide, if you would. We did transition that space needs study and program analysis that you see up here, that we showed several times throughout the course of the project. The needs analysis really showed that the Elder and Human Services was underserved and is really going to be the target for a new structure on the site. Next slide. You know, when we went through that interview process, what you had, the slide represents what you had, what you needed and what you wanted. That was, what you had was about 6,000 square feet gross of, of services. What you needed was roughly 13,206, and what you wanted was 20,000. And that one accounted for future growth and spaces that they just don't have right now. So that dotted line that you see is really kind of the sweet spot of the 15,000 square foot mark, which is, was our target. Go to the next slide. We did evaluate numerous properties throughout Littleton. King Street, 255 Grape Road, and the Shattuck Street campus, three locations on this campus. So, you know, the evaluations for test fitting these programs really were in-depth, and they really did highlight and show us, you know, quite a few things as we were moving throughout the process. Next slide. So what you'll see here is, the last time I spoke before you was kind of late fall, and we had refined that Elder and Human Services to the south side, adjacent to the public library. And the building and the charge was really to maintain a lot of parking. So we were really nestling this building very slenderly into the, into the sledding hill, which also had an impact on the baseball field. And that, as you'll see in a few slides, really proved to us over the winter and early, you know, early part of this year, that it was not a viable, sustainable project for, for the town from a budgetary perspective.
Before we jump away on this slide, because this is the only slide that actually shows 31 Shattuck Street. So this triangle piece, that's the, yeah, so we were looking at squaring that lot off. So we were looking at, really looking at this piece of this triangle to make this feasible project.
And bumping it out at the back.
Right, bumping it out at the back so that we would extend it out here.
To make it a more proportional lot. This, I won't dwell on too much, but this was the, you know, at the time, again, last fall, the, these floor plans for the upper level off the parking lot side, it had the required programmatic elements that we worked with the committees on to develop and determine were appropriate. And this was the lower level that opened up onto what would have been the baseball field level. Again, not going to dwell on that too, too much. This was what we had envisioned at that time for that location and for that structure. Really wanted to keep the scale, I'm sorry, if you can yap right there. The, the scale of the structure, really wanted to respect kind of the residential aspect of it, so we wanted to keep it as low as possible. What you're seeing there, a lot of the lines on the left-hand side of the upper portion is a library in the background. So we really tried to keep our roof height below what the roof height is of the library that currently sits on the site. So we were trying to be extremely respectful of, of, you know, the surrounding site. Next slide. Again, what we were targeting for this, for that project, that site location, the south, south location, was 15,000 square foot of a building. That had a target construction cost of 7.7 million. Construction's cost per square foot of 513 with a total project budget of 10 million. That allowed it for a total project cost per square foot of $666. That was right around the beginning of this year. We got our estimate back. The square footage was slightly increased. Again, that is just how the project evolved into the need of the space. But the estimated construction costs spiked tremendously beyond what any of us on the design side, myself, the OPM, and the committee, and even the estimator was kind of caught off guard to see that it was coming in at almost 14.5 billion just in construction costs. That allowed for, or provided a estimated construction cost of 876 a square foot with a total project budget assuming a 30% soft cost of $18.7 million, which was just completely untenable for the project, quite frankly, at that location. A lot of those cost drivers, after we went back and review it, which we do on every project, whether the numbers come back favorable or not, is critique the estimate. The main drivers in there was due to the site location being so far back, the impacts to the baseball field, the impacts to the subsurface drainage, the impervious area that we had to make up, as well as utility services that had to be brought in from King Street, all really helped unfortunately to elevate that cost per square foot. So it just, it proved to be an untenable project from that perspective. Next slide. So we, we became aware that that property at 31 Shattuck Street was on market and, or potentially on market, and what would the project look like? And could it help be a little bit more cost-effective, looking at it from this perspective, if this were to all kind of align appropriately? So you can see, I'm not sure, Chuck, if you're able to show that adjusted property line for 31 Shattuck, but it does create more of a rectangular lot on the right-hand side.
Is it the dotted one?
Yeah.
Yep, it's kind of coming from the transformer out there. Yep, all the way down. So, so what we've done is looked at that property from the size of the building and the program that we already had, kind of all agreed upon was, was close, was the 16,000 square foot program, and pushed the building as far back off of Shattuck Street as we could to respect the neighborhood and respect the street. And in order to also maintain that single-story elevation that we've all kind of talked to, we, we also pushed the entrance to the building back on the lower portion on the same elevation that exists for the current library. So you're actually entering the building from a traffic perspective and from a pedestrian perspective on that lower level. So that allows us to achieve a single-story view kind of from Shattuck Street in an elevation, which you'll see in the renderings that we have a little bit later on. But it does allow for the double-height volume that is required for the floor plate to actually fit on this site. Next slide. This is, again, a study of that section, the library to the left, the new proposed building to the right. And you can see the middle, the middle line work on the right-hand side of the section is Shattuck Street elevation. So from Shattuck Street, it's a one-story structure. Everything else on the lower portion, correct. That is correct. Thanks, Chuck. And you're entering on the left-hand side from the lower level. That's equivalent with the floor of the, of the public library. Next slide. So these are the updated floor plans. Again, programmatically, we're pretty spot-on. And it's actually, we're feeling really great about the development of it and where we're at. You can see the blue on the left-hand side is the operations. So director, assistant director, admin, reception, veteran affairs, two outreach offices, some workrooms, support space, and a conference room. That's all kind of controlled when you come off of the vestibule, which is the double airlock doors at the top of the page, kind of controlled by a reception desk. Very clear sense of arrival. To the right of the plan is a vertical circulation, an open stairway that gets you up to the second floor, as well as an open lobby that's nice. floor, as well as an open lobby that's nice and light and airy to sit in and be able to talk and play cards. There's also a more quiet space as you move to the opposite side of that stair to the lower level, the bottom half of that floor plan, the study area. So it's drawn away from the public, it's a little bit more quiet, there's a little fireplace in there, so we really see that as a nice cozy warm area to sit in in the winter. Moving down the plan to the right, we've got the support storage spaces, mechanical, electrical, fire protection rooms, men's and women's restroom facilities, a janitor support space, and then the two multipurpose rooms, which have a divisible wall to allow it to become one larger space for the program times that require that. And that's all supported on the furthest right by a decently sized kitchen, which will be able to serve off a cook line and service line. Next slide. The upper story, if you remember, the center was the anchoring stairway. So that anchoring stairway, if you came up from that area, there's also an elevator that serves right off that same lobby area. Yes. There's billiards, two billiard stables right across the stairs when you come up from that stairs, and some exercise and fitness rooms on the right-hand side. There's an opening that's Xed out, that's called, that looks down on the gallery below. So on the lower level, there's a gallery for art and changing of displays throughout the seasons. And on the far left-hand side is the program room, the two program rooms, again, that were still part of the initial programming exercise. Next slide. So these are the exterior renderings that you see from the, if you were standing, coming from the library, with the library at your back. So it's very, still New England vernacular. It's got, you know, standard clapper materials, stone base on it, a lobby reception area, and you can see, moving further away from that lobby, a really light and airy waiting area, and then the multipurpose volume on the far left there. Next slide. This is moving further down that parking lot, so this is really looking at the multipurpose room and the kitchen on the left-hand side, and then back to the right-hand side, you can see the existing Shattuck Street in the background. This also creates all-new parking right along that area that mimics the shape of the parking from your existing library. So it's obviously opposite pull-in direction, but maximizes that. And then this is the view, next slide, from Shattuck Street. Again, keeping that residential scale down, really pulling the building as far back away from Shattuck Street proper that we could in order to get the respect that, you know, we feel the neighborhood requires, and treating it with traditional New England-style vernacular roofs and materials, as well as landscaped elements, we really think it's a good-looking And we're still, these are some study models that we went through. Just showing, these are only four, but this is kind of a behind-the-scenes look at what we do on a day-to-day basis after we, you know, meet with people and hear what concerns are, really push the study of it and ensure that we get the scale and the look and the feel of it. So it says that it's Littleton Senior Center. This is the, this is one of two potential schedules. Right now, we are ending, let me see where we are. So right now, we are ending the schematic design stage and potentially getting into the design development portion of it. This slide that's in front of you shows the project still under construction documents with a construction document estimate for fall town meeting. And then that would not have a bid in hand, that would be off of an estimate, and we would bring that cost to, you know, to the town. That would allow for pre-qualification, kind of overlap that timeframe, and then get into bidding over the last part of the year, and then construction could start Jan. 1. The next slide. We feel is a little bit more appropriate and tangible. It still has us finishing up our design elements by the fall. That's not going to change in either scheme, but what it does is it allows the project to be pre-qualified if it were to go on a certain delivery method. And I know Brian wants to speak to that.
Absolutely. Yeah, one thing I did want to bring up about these two schedules is the first schedule has us going for an estimate when we're not fully done design. And I think in the climate that we're in right now, one of the reasons why we are moving our design across the hill is we started to see all the escalations that we were seeing, not only in the site, but in our mechanical, our electrical systems, our plumbing systems, our concrete systems, our gypsum board systems, they're all up across the board. By moving it across the parking lot, we're really feeling like we're saving a significant portion of the site costs that we saw at the library. And so the second schedule, what it allows us to do is by going to that spring town meeting, it allows us to have a concrete number in hand and bringing it to the people exactly what that's going to cost. One person I did want to have bring up is the chair of the permanent municipal building committee. He did want to speak a little bit to the delivery method that he's suggesting for construction, and it's similar to what we had at the library.
Well, first of all, I have to say it's great being out in public again, you know?
Good to see us today.
This is better than a Zoom meeting any day. So, yeah, thanks, Brian, I appreciate that. We had a tremendous success with CM at risk on the library, not so much with the design bid build on the police station and the fire station. Having said that, PMBC still has not been charged with getting involved in this project by the Board of Selectmen. We are kind of at the invitation of the chairman and the town manager attending these meetings, but we will be meeting Wednesday night, and we will be voting to, on the delivery method. And I will recommend to our committee that we go with the design, the CM at risk method. And it was successful on the library, and I think it will be successful going forward. So that's my pitch.
Thanks. Steve, actually, if you don't mind, could you just give us like a 10,000 or 30,000-foot view of the benefits of CM at risk and, you know, some of the wins that you felt we had versus the fire station or the police station?
Good point. So Brian can fill in any blanks that I leave out. The cons of a CM at risk, you pay a little bit more upfront because you get your contractor on board earlier, you use his scheduler, you use his...
Estimator?
Estimator, thank you. And some of his team, early on in the process, and at the library, we found that very helpful with value engineering. We were over budget initially, and Commodore's team brought in some alternate materials and methods and got us back in line, which was very helpful. The pros are that the contractor becomes a partner and he works with us, and on the library, that was very evident. The change order amount, or the percent of change orders coming out of the owner's contingency was less than a half a percent of the total construction cost, which is like unheard of.
Right.
Did I get that right?
You did.
Just got to double check. So, you know, the benefit is, you know, they do act as a partner, and it's a win-win situation. Anything else?
The only other thing I would say is the reason why we're bringing it up now is because this is the point where you bring on that CM and that after the schematic design phase, in order to maximize the CM's potential and their expertise, you want to bring them on around after schematic design into design development. So for example, at the library, it was a tricky site when we're building into the side of the hill. They brought some new techniques about retaining walls and thickness of foundation walls that ended up saving six figures right off the bat before that, which in total paid for their pre-construction services.
You know, and they were faced with the challenge of COVID after they bid, so I think they had almost $100,000 in COVID costs, right?
They had a $75,000 allowance for COVID, and so that's tracked with the OPM on a requisition basis. We go through what they've actually spent, and that's down to the line item. We were tracking the amount of, you know, hand sanitizer that's being purchased for the construction trailers, so, yeah. So that's taken out of the allowance, what's not used is give back to the owner at the end of the project.
And, you know, these two schedules that Brian showed you, it's imperative that we decide which direction we're going in right now because it makes a difference in the estimate. So if we're going to go design, or construction manager at risk, we need to make that decision now.
Okay. Get PMBC involved now.
That'd be great.
I have a question.
Please.
You said it didn't work very well on the police station, so does it depend perhaps more on the contractor than on the method?
We did do CM at risk.
Well, the method, the method that we used on the police station and the fire station was design, low bid.
Okay.
So you get what you pay for.
Got it, thank you.
That's the bottom line.
I misunderstood, I thought you said you had used at risk for all of them, but that's not the case.
No.
And as Steve mentioned, with, you know, as designers, having a CM on board early on is crucial, we found on other projects, they really have that buy-in input, and they're able to bring things to the table right off the bat as far as us being able to specify materials because they're having direct, you know, conversations with their trades.
Subject matter expertise.
100%, they're able to say, look, we're not able to get certain ceramic tiles, for instance, because they're just not available, would you consider this?
Spend something else.
Exactly.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, so they can start to bring their forecasting of their knowledge back to us as we're completing the design. So bringing them on at this stage is, you know, smart.
Can you quantify how much more it will cost upfront?
I can ask our estimator to.
Just curious.
Yeah, go for it. What we saw, we had a very hungry CM when we did the library project, but what they charged was roughly around 1% of construction for pre-construction services. That might, that was two years ago when we brought them on. So ultimately, we would go through an RFQ process where we look at the qualifications of all the CMs that want to apply for this job. We go through an interview process, and then we work with the selection committee about, we look at their fees as well as their general conditions. The fees are set in stone, that is non-negotiable. Their GCs are, you know, obviously, I would take a hard look at that and see if the labor and workmanship was required for what they're showing, and then we proceed with them as the CM after that. They would be helping us in a project this size, doing a full pre-qualification as well, which is for the filed sub-bids, which are the prime contractors on this job. We'd still go through a full vetting of that as well, as well as the CM would be responsible for providing the three-plus quotes for all other subcontractors that would be on this job. So it may not be as aggressively competitive as a design bid build low bidder, but you're still getting that competitive three quotes from the CM.
Additionally, there's another step. To go CM at risk, you have to apply to the Office of Inspector General. So I think you're starting that process?
I've prepared the documents for that. It's roughly a 60-day process for the review of the Inspector General's office, and then you hear back from them, and then you can proceed with your RFQ from there.
Brian, you kind of alluded to the fact that there was a ROI, a return on investment that was realized pretty quickly with some of the changes and some of the suggestions that were made by Commodore, by the foundation and the retaining walls and things like that, six figures, I think you alluded to. And that's kind of been your experience with, you can pay for it upfront, but you typically will get the return.
And if we went the regular design bid build low bidder delivery method, we'd still be going through several value engineering roles with the architect, you know, whether that's materials or whether that's cutting scope out. What the CM really can provide is technique and expertise on past projects of this size. That ultimately being in their qualifications, have they done things just like this, which is what we get to pick up.
And they can do it before it becomes a change order, because change orders cost ridiculously.
In a low bidder scenario, you might have a contractor who can see the issue on the drawing, but brings that to, after they're awarded the job, they can do that for you, but it would come at a cost.
I'd say the other thing that's a benefit of having a CM on board is that while we're estimating on the designer's side, they're also able to peer review or estimate that service as well, so we can really work to reconcile that those later stages estimates to really ensure that we're on track.
So even though I've been on the owner's side for 20 years, prior to that, I was a contractor, and I would start my change order log as I went through the contract documents. That's not in there, that's not in there, I can get something for that one, you know? That's the way, that's the way it works.
So we make it up.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from the select board?
Nope.
FinCom or COA?
And then just something, you can do it after or before.
Just something? You have something to add?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
So Anthony, if you could just put it back on the Shattuck Street?
Just wanted to make sure that it was just, it was sort of hit home that, especially as the design was evaluated, wanted to make sure that people knew that the Shattuck Street was not an entrance to the building, the entrance is out back, that this lawn area allows for not only, as was stated, pushed back, but allows for options for screening. We can do strategic screening so that if there's specific sightlines that a butterer may be concerned about, to make sure that there's not bright lights, that there's, that this design gives us that flexibility to really work to make sure we can minimize some of those visual impacts.
Where it's situated.
Exactly. So just because I know when everyone is talking about on a tennis court, people picture two stories sitting at tennis court level, that's something that this building definitely isn't, and that this technically would be at 21 feet, which is probably, if not shorter than 31, the existing house, that shore 31 Shattuck, would probably be at least level with it, so.
Can I ask a question about this drawing right here? In reference to the current tennis courts, where does this, where would this wall sit on the tennis court?
If we go back to the slide of the site, that would probably best show it right there. So pretty much as far back as the backside of the current Shattuck Street building is where we're kind of in line with, if you can draw a visual across.
Brian, is it right here?
Yes. You can see it, you can see the tennis court dashed, you can see it dashed right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
That's what you're looking for?
Yep.
So it actually sits further back in the pavement that's in and out?
Yes, it does.
Yep. March, any questions from COA?
I don't think so.
No? Liz, or any comments, questions? Go ahead, Liz.
Hi, Liz Tridio, Director of Elder and Human Services. Just want to put it out there that COA board and myself love this design. I love that the programmable spaces are flexible and we can use them for many different purposes. And there's also casual interaction spaces inside, which we really found during COVID, people lost that ability to have casual interactions. We planned this design for the current needs of Littleton seniors, but also our future needs, what we're going to be needing in the future, room for expansion and rooms. And the space is flexible enough that we can share it with other departments on our off-hours. So I love this design and I think it really meets our needs. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. FinCom's good?
Yeah, I guess the question kind of remains with us on whether the article remains the same, does this change anything about the article coming forth? And I know that'll be a discussion probably right up until the town meeting.
I think you're right, yeah.
Just because of the timeline potentially. Just because of the timeline potentially, I mean, that could decide a little bit.
Megan? Can I just ask, can you mind just come up here?
Me?
Yeah. Should I have Liz come up too? I can't control Liz.
Megan, 428 Shattuck Street. I'm super familiar with this view because I look at it every day when I look out my window. But I'm looking at the 31 Shattuck Street, and there are at least 11 trees between the tennis courts and that house.
One here?
Yep. So I know that when you're doing something, you want to take every measure to minimize cutting down trees. You're going to have to cut down a lot of trees. Has that been taken into consideration on this? And then also, what is going to happen with the driveway of that residence? Because it looks like you're cutting into where there's a couple of garages right now. And I'm just curious, if that house goes back up on the market, I want to know, like, where's the driveway going to go? Because if it's going to be cutting into the driveway of that house, will it go on the other side directly across from my driveway, next door to my, the next door neighbor's driveway? That's my other concern. If the architects have anything to review.
I don't think we do, no. We didn't have a slide that showed that, did we?
I don't, I don't have a slide showing that, and it's still in development. But all those points are taken. We do look to be as sustainable as possible in our design. So as many trees as we can save, we would like to, and/or come up with an ultimate plan to, you know, as Joe mentioned, make sure that plantings are appropriately placed and located.
So kind of don't have an answer to your question, but thank you for raising it.
I'm just super curious about the driveway.
Yeah, I don't imagine the curb cut changing, but we'll definitely take a look at it.
And it stands to reason, if this is being built on top of where those garages are located now, those garages would either have to be moved or raised.
Yeah. They were in pretty rough shape.
Yeah. Tough to move. Yeah, some water on them, but yeah.
And also, Mr. Chair, this slide, you can see really well as far as the amount of area that then would be transferred from the town parcel to this parcel. So even though, right, that rectangle would go to 31. So even if you needed to then shift back, someone could easily put out a garage or have the driveway swing back. It is something that as we work with the architects, the engineers, the site has not been fully surveyed yet. So once we nail those things down, we'll be able to take a closer look as far as accommodating those things. There's no proposal as far as swapping driveway locations. We're able to grant access easements. If we needed a sliver, we can adjust that lot line a little bit more. We already have to make sure that it maintains the existing frontage.
Looking at Google Maps, it looks like the garage is not entirely on 31 Shattuck Street's property. Yes, it is.
Correct.
I don't know if that's accurate.
There is accurate.
All right.
Any other questions? Mr. Sanders? Just raising a finger these days now, huh?
Yeah, but you don't see the hand.
I was happy to see that it was that finger.
George Sanders, 682 Great Road. Mr. Chairman, I got probably about three questions. One, is this the site? Is this the site that LLB said that you can put the senior center there? Have they confirmed that you can put it there?
Right behind you.
With the property adjustment, yes, before.
Well, I'm talking about with the, with the adjustment of the 31 there. So you can put it there?
Yes.
The other thing is that on the cost, you're still working on the cost. We're going to have a few days before it's going to be a town meeting. And I'm just wondering, based on the time that LLB has been working with the town on that, are we sure that they're going to get something for us to present at the town meeting? Because I certainly think that's a crucial question that they need to answer for us.
Steve, I'll take that.
Okay.
So, yes, LLB has a deadline, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's the 21st, or 21st of April. So it gives us enough time to have that preliminary number ready for town meeting.
Okay. Well, the next thing is that can they give us any idea here tonight? How close we are compared to the other site?
No.
Cost-wise?
Yeah, it'd be all speculation, George.
Yeah, well, I know, I know it's speculation. They've been speculating for a long time. You know, we saw it kind of come here, at least I came here tonight thinking that I'm going to hear something. And they said, we're still developing. We're still developing. Well, I'm no engineer, but I'm smart enough to know that engineers have ideas pretty close as to what we're going to be bringing this into, cost-wise, to the town. Because the people wants to know, you're coming in, you say you got about 6.5 in reserve, and whatever you're coming in with, you're saying, well, we can get this under the levy and be able to do that. Well, I just hope that we can do what's right here with regards to this project. One being is they don't come in and do what they did to the library. They gave a concrete bare floors down there. We had to fight to get them to take care of those floors. And I'm hoping that nothing in this building comes in looking like it did in the library. Because we're paying too good amount of money here for something to come in that you should know better. And I didn't appreciate that for the amount of money we paid over there. And there was people had to sort of kind of fight and twist arms and so forth and so on to get them to do it. You're going to build that? We paying you first-class money? We're looking for a first-class building. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Cranbacher, 205 Hartwell, and I'm on the COA. I just have one question. I didn't see the total square footage. Could you just say what the square footage is for the two floors?
Sure.
16.
So it's the same as the other site?
Slightly under the other site. The other site was.
16, 6, 6, 7?
16, 6.
6, 6, 3.
3. We're currently at.
16, 2.
16, 5, 2, 8.
Any other questions? Board members, questions, comments? So we, as far as any action, really just CM at Risk, right?
So two decision points tonight would be really the scheduling. The quicker one, that would be going to a fall town meeting with only 80% design, not really having a total concrete number construction, or allowing them to be ready for next spring with the concrete number.
With the CM at Risk coming on.
And then the CM at Risk, that's a second one out of the, right. CM at Risk, yes, because we want to take preliminary vote tonight, and then the PMBC will do their thing on Wednesday, and then Brian can start the application process with the Inspector General's office.
Mr. Moore?
We're going to, we'll just take a vote Wednesday night, and then we will have to.
We'll have to come back and take a.
Make the recommendation.
Right. But we were looking for preliminary support of the select board tonight.
Right.
Vote, right.
So discussion dependent, but we, I think we're, correct me if I'm wrong in reading this wrong, but this looks like the site. It looks like it fits as well as it can on the site. It meets the needs. COA is supportive of it, Liz is supportive of it. We've been working at this and trying to find out how to get all these programmatic spaces and multipurpose room and everything in place. And I like the, we've been going at this, like you said, since 2018 and trying to figure out how to do this, looking at other sites, looking at commercial property, and then trying to find out how we can, how we can create a space for a much-needed space that we've been trying to get for the seniors for a long time. So I'd like to give some sort of a vote of endorsement to something tonight.
Please. Please, please, please.
So what is, what, I'll ask for some guidance here, Anthony. What motion can we take?
You can take a motion to have the permanent municipal building committee vote to recommend to them that they pursue CM at Risk for the construction project would be the first thing. Steve, right?
All right.
Yeah, and then once the recommendation is made to the board and the board approves it, then Brian can't move forward until he gets the.
Second vote.
The minutes of the meeting that have been voted upon. So you vote at one meeting, and then the next meeting, you vote to approve those minutes, and then he can move forward.
Right. Okay, you need that for the IG, the application.
Yeah. The final application, yeah. I can get the draft going with draft minutes and work with town council, but that we will ultimately need the, right, you voted on it.
Okay.
Which we'll have that for the.
Sure. You got a question? You got that vote to look.
Yeah, I'm thinking. So are we voting on the CM at Risk piece of it, or are we voting on the site? Like, what are we, what are we talking about right now?
I think what we're voting on is to ask the PMBC to give us a recommendation that we can vote. I mean, do we, I mean, tail wagging, all right, let me tell you.
What's?
Take a vote, but we're going to do it anyway. Right?
What's the vote the Inspector General's looking for exactly?
They're going to look for the meeting minutes from the select board that's approving that we apply for.
Right, so you're approving the recommendation we apply for.
CM at Risk, three Inspector General. We can make it conditional upon the recommendation of the PMBC.
We can do that.
That's one way we can do it, right?
Yep.
And then once we get that back from them, we can just accept that and endorse our own.
And Brian can start the process.
Get a look?
Watch the video.
Yeah, no, so I want to wrap that piece of this up, but I do, I do also want to revisit the concerns of the butters on Shattuck Street and as a group decide going forward how we're going to improve communication. I know this, we're going to create a page on the town website with all this information for people about this project. We had talked about that. But I also want to figure out, we have three butters before us today. I don't know how many residents actually live on Shattuck Street, but figure out how we're going to keep communication going forward with residents on the street. And just, you know, also let them know, I don't know if we're going to do a traffic study. You know, one of the things people have expressed concern about the condition of the road, honestly, because town sewer is coming, you know, there's no sense in paving Shattuck Street if we're going to tear it up again for town sewers. So that's one of the reasons why nothing's been going well. But just to try to convey things like that to the butters and the residences.
I don't know who would manage this, but if we could, you know, if we, the website's great. If people can navigate to it and it stays updated. If there's a way to do it via a Facebook page specific to the project or, this is where like ClaireGov, that we've kind of talked about engaging with a service like.
Maps and that, we had a core focus, we'd want to be informed of every step along the way, any updates. So we could, I would just get an email group, you know, it's a small enough population.
Just, yeah.
Liz will have that website, and then she can also keep that updated.
Yeah, but proactively.
Send out an email blast to this group, you know.
Right, meaning, they're going to discuss this, like, just for example, they brought up a concern about the driveway and the garage. Like, that was really good feedback in the trees, but just to continue that dialogue going forward and just figuring that out. How would we do that?
Give me some email business.
We're also available at the town's invitation to assist with anything that you might need.
Right, and, and thank you. And I think with respect to other projects in town, we actually had a neighborhood point person.
Yeah.
Didn't we? Chuck?
We have, yeah, we have done that.
And we've had email groups too, where we're interested.
Are you guys okay sharing your email addresses so that we can proactively get stuff out to you?
Yeah.
If there is going to be an agenda item that.
We probably should make enough to contact the other residents on Shattuck Street too, to invite them if they want to.
There's more of us who should make it tonight.
Right.
Yeah.
So whatever means, Joe, or whoever's, you know, we've got to think about how to contact them all and ask them if they want to be on that distribution list.
Can I just, just thank you for, yeah, just giving the knowledge and just, you know, trying to give the.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming forward and.
I'm trying to continue again. You all already acknowledged, but I definitely am.
See, we usually only hear from you at town meetings, so you're way ahead of it, actually.
That was the universal you, not you specifically.
Yeah, not you specifically, but this group.
Yeah. It's easy for us to get here.
Touche.
We just see you, you know? I can roll myself back up the street.
But that'll be good, if we can, at least, you know, give you some heads ups and we can even share what the, how to get the e-alerts and things like that.
Yeah, we get those AOL, you know, things that we refuse to get rid of.
I have a hotmail.
No one will ever be able to find us, so.
Well, whatever means you want to be contacted. It could even be a text, I suppose, you know.
Whatever works best for you all.
Yeah, I'll put our phone numbers both.
Great. All right, good.
One other thing just to add to that is that this type of list is really important as well. Is if construction goes forward, as the OPM will have onsite presence, that'll make sure it's doing, reach out to any of the neighbors of any type of loud construction, concrete trucks, or any type of disturbance.
Dust mitigation.
Oh, yeah.
You mean like when the library went in?
Turn around, talk to the guy in the back of the room.
Sorry, couldn't resist that.
No, it's okay. It's lowland fruit. You should have taken it. All right.
We looking for a direction as far as what plan, what timeline, the original one that we went with, or?
I think that's probably pending the, you know, subsequent discussion as far as CM at Risk. It sounds like it may proceed in that fashion. So if that's the preferred schedule to go and bring to the town a hard bid, that doesn't, again, change our design schedule. We still have to get everything done by the fall.
Well, we'd probably be going to that second schedule.
But we'd probably go into that second meeting, so. And that gives a little bit more opportunity for community outreach and input, which helps support the project.
So I'm not sure I see the relationship to why would it, why does it, I mean, it doesn't change the, I mean, you do what you need to do with the engineering and the construction schedule. Why does that have to affect the financing schedule? I mean, to delay it, I guess, if we're paying to.
Because you would bring to fall town meeting a 80% construction estimate versus an actual bid from a CM.
If I may, sir, so the first schedule, we would have a general contractor bid probably around the holidays. And we would have financed the project three months earlier. So we would have a number, and our fingers crossed for when the general contractor bids come in around that holiday timeframe.
About that, Christmas, December holidays? Yeah, okay. Well, I don't think we've heard anything remotely. That's all news here tonight. So I don't.
I was just telling you, based on the first schedule that was laid out there, that's why in the climate that we're at now, the square footage prices we were seeing at the other project across the parking lot, the fear being without having all of our unknowns addressed with an actual heartbeat in hand, there is a, there is a level of risk there.
Well, that's kind of the headline that was buried somewhere in the story. That's really significant news there. We were already grappling with the increased estimates and had prepared. Prepared ourselves for how to put a cap number on what we felt we would be willing to support. And we're somewhat backwards from that, but it's all informed by the estimates. And I think the, my understanding was that the efforts that you're undertaking, which are due dates 21st, was to see how far we're going to be able to come down off of that 18 million plus figure, correct?
Correct.
So we were anticipating making decisions based on those estimates, not on having the, you know, bids back from everybody in the winter.
That's true. That's pretty typical to get from the schematic design, excuse my contact, to get from schematic design to the next phase of DD, CD, and bid. That's typical of the process to move on from an estimate at this early stage.
Right, okay. So. Plus, we're living with, because of COVID and the volatility of construction right now, it would just.
now, it, it's just, it's not the same as when we went out for the, for the fire station, you know, it's just, it's crazy numbers right now that you just can, you know, and I think Brian's seeing this, both Bryans are seeing this in other projects that they're working
Fully aware, and the school projects that are under construction now, they're all over the state, I'm sure you're very aware from your contacts and the, but, that being said, if we're, you know, if we're locking down on the site, then, again, we get our hands, at least through the estimate phase, reconciled to that, you know, recent change in the climate of the, the cost climate, that operating on the best information we have, it's, you know, it's been a laborious process, time to move forward, on, you know, on that aspect of it, anyway.
One other point that I'll bring up is that, per our schedule, we would have two other construction estimates done on this, on this design. This is a conceptual design, schematic design estimate, and there's actually large contingencies that are built into it because things haven't been designed yet. So if you look at any of the schematics that have been shown, there's no mechanical
But that's a norm we use from other construction projects.
Absolutely, yes. Great. Mr. Emmer.
So Mark Grandbach, I'm gonna speak as a library trustee on how we built the library. If you remember, we went to the May town meeting and asked, we were, had schematics a little, little farther along than this, we went to the October town meeting, we're in the process of going CM at risk, we did not have the CM at risk onboard over the summer. When we went to the fall town meeting, we were roughly 80%, and we were trying to bring the CM on at the same time. By the time we brought the CM on, the estimates that the CM gave us were different than what we were getting from the independent cost estimator, and then we were going through the whole redesign process to bring the cost back in line with what the town meeting approved. It's gonna take at least, what, 60 days to get the approval to do CM at risk, and then you're interviewing someone and bringing him on, you're going to have a really tight schedule trying to do anything for October with the CM at risk, just because of the amount of time, it's going to, I'd be amazed if they could actually throw anything together with the CM at risk for October, just because of the timeline. I think you're much better off going with the May timeline and CM at risk. The CM at risk saved us a huge amount of money, but it is going to make the process go a little longer, just to get everyone onboard, and you'll have a much better number when you go to May than you will in October. Well, we, the difference between what the estimates we had at 80% and the estimates we had at the further on were almost a million dollars, and we had to do cuts afterwards to bring it back in line. So it would be much better to bring the people onboard and get it on, on track. I mean, I hate to see the project pushed out, but it is the more fiscally
We're entering year five.
I understand that, I, I am fully aware of that, right? I want to see this built, just like, I joined the space needs committee in the COA to get the, get this built, so I fully understand that, but it is, I think, the CM at risk and postponing it a little longer is a better decision.
I think parallel tracks is the best way to try to, and, and, you know, we're, we're used to a climate where we have tight deadlines, that's the nature of things, I mean, so that's, accept that challenge, I'd rather act prospectively, I guess this is to the board as much as anybody, and deal with the numbers that we get on the 21st and hope that matches our calculations, and if it doesn't, then we address it, if it does, then we move forward.
It's a, it's a fluid conversation, we all want it done as soon, as soon as possible, but, yeah. As far as what action we need to take tonight, we need to charge, I think we take, I shouldn't say, you know, 31, the tennis court site, not 31 Shattuck Street, that's not the site. Building the senior center on the location adjacent to the town hall is the site, and that we want to, however we worded it before, but
CM, yep.
Yeah, just have the PMBC evaluate and give us a recommendation on whether we go to CM at risk, just so that we've identified a site, we've identified a process, and we've got something in place so that, at some point, we can give Brian some direction and some minutes where we actually took actions in order to go to the IG in the event that PMBC, which we assume the PMBC is going to approve the CM at risk, especially since they just had success, so.
So is the motion that we're gonna recommend a CM at risk, or that we're gonna take the advice of the PMBC?
I thought A very good version, I don't know, Anthony
We recommended pending
Pending the recommendation.
We recommend CM at risk pending the approval, pending the approval of this PMBC?
Pending their recommendation.
Pending the recommendation of the PMBC, okay. So I move this select board vote to recommend using CM at risk for the Shattuck Center construction project pending, subject to recommendation of the PMBC, a vote, a positive vote of the PMBC.
Second.
That whole motion in italics.
It was, so, so figure it out.
Yeah, yeah. The movement seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, okay, took some action, that's good. I think we're okay to move on.
Yes.
Brian, Brian?
Thank you.
Thank you.
More, thank you all.
Thank you.
Looks good, right, can't wait to see it.
Thank you.
Yeah, looking forward to keep going. Thank you, welcome, and to the residents, thank you very much.
Do we get to stay and listen to the rest of this, or no?
Sure. You're welcome to, but you can also watch it at home.
I'm just really curious about Robinson Road, I don't know that he's all alone.
So, just while the room's clear, no, no, just, just while the room's clearing out, the town acquired Robinson Road.
The big old house, right?
Yeah, yeah, has the barn next to it. Furbex, Furbex lived there, if you remember the Furbex.
Get the years on.
The Furbex house.
I get cold and then it's hot, okay? Maybe some people that don't have years. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we acquired that a few years ago at town meeting, in order to put a historical restriction on it.
Okay.
The intention one is to sell it, just put the restrictions on it and sell it.
That's a historic house, right?
Well, to, to put restrictions on it, yeah, so then, you know, you can't change the facade, there's certain things that you can do, you can't
So are, this is curiosity thing, so the historical society, whenever they are here, do they have any power?
So they
The commission
The commission does, yeah.
The commission, like Lexington, it's like, you can't even sneeze next to a house, but
So, a lot of the houses in Lexington have, have a, like, a national registration, so, a registry, yeah, so
Well, it's like my mother's house, your house has a little plaque on it, yeah.
But that's
About it.
In, in order for us to put the historical restriction on it, we have to sell it, we can't hold the restriction and own the property. So now we've put it out to bid, so people have submitted bids, and now we're gonna discuss how we're going to
Homeowners are putting in bids, oh.
Anybody, anybody.
Well, we did pursue
Cause I saw for sale, and then at the for sale was down, and then I, you know.
You know, well, we did buy the property, the principal goal is exactly what Chuck said, you know, put, put the conservation restriction on it. While we've owned it, the first year or two, we entertained, you know, a lot of different options about housing, set different kinds of uses, they're of a historic nature, that, you know, either a museum, or a museum with a cafe type thing, those have all kind of fell through, but we still, you know, the quickest way, or the best way to preserve the building is to get the restriction on it and get it back into private hands.
Okay, so put a restriction on it, so then you can sell it as a historic house.
So anybody that buys it and wants to do something with it
Has to get approvals.
They, they, there's eyes on it that will not allow them to just knock it down and put up
It's a deed restriction.
It's a deed restriction that
Oh, okay.
Limits what they can do.
Okay, so that's reasonable, okay, that's what I wanted to
All right.
Put my hat on, I'll go
You can cut through the building if you want.
You know, I notice too, if they don't know, they can get the, copy the drawings on the town website, right, from under, under in your packet, right?
Uh huh. Yes. Anthony, we can also just email all that out to these folks too, right? Not to get their list read, give them a little information dump.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can all this on that website, we can send them the link and
You know, the TLC for the Shattuck Street residents who've shown interest, just, you know, give them a little, you know.
We can just send a PDF, okay?
A lot of sidebars going on here, folks, let's, Marge. Thank you.
Goodbye.
Thank you.
Goodnight, Carol.
Thanks for coming out. All right, so, should we just roll right into the 12 Robinson, agenda item, should just
Good, see, Caroline's here.
You wanna do that?
And other folks, taking out order? To the board. Sure. Whatever.
Yeah, it's supposed to be for 820, so we're okay with that. All right, so we're gonna slide to agenda item 9B, which is what we were just discussing, 9 Robinson Road?
12 Robinson Road.
12 Robinson Road, thank you.
Are we expecting Linda, by the way? She's not coming.
She will, she will come tonight, she will be able to come tonight.
Okay, thanks.
So we did put out an RFP for submissions for, for 12 Robinson Road, we received two submissions, and they are in our packet, and I guess it's, it's, what's the pleasure of the board, what, how do we want to proceed?
Joe can give a summary.
So just a, a quick, quick summary, and have it in the packet for you as well, basically just identified for the, for the board as far as we had a deadline of April 1st for responses, we did have 21 unique individuals registered, received the RFP, however, we only received two responses, classic construction and from Joseph Cataldo. In the board's packet, I had basically just on a quick spreadsheet as far as just bid tabulation, did they submit the necessary paperwork? Both did. I followed that up today with doing an evaluation based on criteria that's established by the RFP, the board has that as a handout, and also with some general comments on, on both of those. Within the RFP, it does state that while the chief procurement officer is able to provide a recommendation, the board is able to invite one or more respondents back to interview. So the board would be able to ask both to come in for a future meeting if you decided to, one of the applications, as, as you'll see in, in my evaluation, while it, it, it met the criteria for being complete, it really didn't expand upon that, another one did. So it becomes a question if we're, if we're inviting at least one in to interview with the board, whether or not we'd want to extend it to the second person as well. As we've talked many times about issuing RFPs in general, the, the board is not obligated to award if, if the board felt that either we did not receive enough interest, or if there was other opportunities, so that's something that we could always discuss at a, at a later point, perhaps after conducting an interview.
Okay, so we can go, go through that process, have the two applicants come in here, for instance, present what their plans are, and we can make a determination if that's what we were hoping for on that site, or if we want to go back out, or
Exactly.
Any of the above, okay. I think that's, I mean, I'd, I'd support that process.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add, and we had, I guess, Joe, you forwarded the email from Linda Stein, chair of the
Yes, Linda did email this morning, asking as far as if, if we did conduct interviews, if the historic commission would be able to
Yeah, I'd say that's
Have a voice at that.
No brainer, and, so, you know, we, we should just make sure they're invited to the meetings where we're discussing and send them out the materials we get, so.
Can we see the, our, the actual responses?
I'll forward that off, I have to make, I have most of it scanned in, one did include plans, so I need to scan those in, and then I can send that out.
Sounds good.
Wanted to make sure that had an idea as far as when and whether the board wanted to either, you could, the RFP is written that if you want to create a interview committee comprised of members of the select board, you could do that, do it in different ways, or you could just invite everyone from the full board.
It's the pleasure board. Only a couple of them, why not bring them
Yeah, yeah.
And we all consider them.
I mean, unless we review the one that's not as advantageous and decide that it's not worth bringing them in, but
Oh, it's, it's Let the town see that, you know?
Yeah, okay.
Rather than tell them that.
Sure, that's fine, okay.
So we can look at the
So we will get those two RFPs, so we can review them.
Yeah, so, one of the things is because we do have an article for town meeting, authorizing the select board to enter negotiations, to basically sell the property, it is something that we'd be able to consider on the, on the 25th for town meeting, so at least we'd have that as a discussion, if, if the board determined that they want to proceed, then at least for town meeting, we'd have a course of action if it was something that the, the board wanted to hold back and maybe do differently, then at least, if questions came up during that article at town meeting, we'd have a response for that as well.
Okay. Is there a meeting that folks are, we've, we've owned the property for how many years now? One we'd like to
Three, four, two.
18, 2018, yeah.
Was it the 25th, or is that
What's the agenda look like on the 25th, at this point? Pretty light, I think, right? You guys okay with that, 25th?
Sure.
So I think we have interview, we have school committee joint appointments, that shouldn't be that long.
You have one or two, I think it's two applicants, right?
Actually, there's one, uh
Oh, all right, well, that will be long, then.
Yeah, there's, I think there's like five.
Okay.
Oh.
Yeah.
This is for the interim seat, the one that we have to appoint with the joint, okay?
Yeah, I've gotten, I think I've seen at least four, and I have to check which ones we don't get up in our office in the town clerkhouse.
All right, so, on the, the meeting after that, which should be May 9th? Thank you.
Give people a chance to get the information, look them over too.
Okay.
Including the historic commission.
Yeah. That works. All right. Yeah, do you have any comments or any thoughts on
No, just wanted to
The process? Representation? Okay, good. Thanks, now, we'll make sure that we, that we share the information with you all. Thank you. All right. Let's go back to room seven. All right, so, annual review process for the town administrator. Let's, gonna kind of take the lead on this a little bit here, I think, I think that this, I'm gonna take the lead because I'm gonna fall in the sword a little bit. Last year, we, we had made assignments, typically the, the, the select board chair is responsible for the performance evaluation of the town administrator, and we usually have, we, we pair up two members, do the police chief, and two members do the performance evaluation for the fire chief, so I haven't done Anthony's review to this, to date, and I think that, I apologize to the board, I apologize to you, Anthony, and I apologize to the town for not having gotten it done. I do think it's, it's important from developmental standpoint for us to give you direction and then hold you accountable for whatever direction we give you, I, I don't think that, I don't think that I've given you enough direction in looking at doing your performance evaluation, there wasn't a whole lot of goals or objectives that we had kind of clearly set, aside from our goals, which you are charged with bringing to fruition. So, that being said, I think there were some other issues that we wanted to address, and I think that unless and until we address those other issues, that doing performance evaluation right now is, I won't say inappropriate, but it's, I think it should wait until we, we finish some other, some other things that we were working on with you from a management perspective. So I, that, that's how I feel, given that I was the one that was responsible for doing this and getting it done.
You're referring back to the meeting we had before that we never, never completed?
Yes, I'm trying to be as careful as possible.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
Back to it, yeah, yes. So, I, I, it's, that's where I'm, that's where I'm at with this, and I, I think that the, the process needs to be re-engaged, I think that we collectively should determine, literally using the performance evaluation form, determine what those goals and objectives are, and in order for us to do that, we do have to post and make sure that we do that publicly, so that we don't violate open meeting law, and then from there, there'll And then from there, there'll be a clear message to Anthony what our objectives and our expectations are, and he can be evaluated off of that.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add, this, at least on one piece of it, Chuck, is that, you know, I think you accurately prepared what had been our custom, and that's about what it was as far as how we handle it. You know, free to do a piece of that differently if we want, but we've also had, you know, I don't know how far back it was, a year or two ago, email from Town Council kind of advising us that the, you know, the changing review of these things through the AG's office or whoever monitors it, that, you know, we really should be following a different process. So I think what you're speaking to is to kind of incorporate that, so, you know...
I definitely think we should incorporate that process.
Yeah, and that's, not only should we, it's apparently what we should have been doing. And it isn't just for this position, it's for the direct reports. We have Police and Fire Chiefs as well, at this point, anyway. And so, you know, we ought to get on track for doing that. All individual members have a path for getting their input in, following those forms that have been shared, and then, you know, the ultimate process is a scheduled public review, and, yeah.
Right.
So I just, I couldn't disagree more. I think we cannot postpone this anymore. It's not fair to Anthony to not give him tangible evaluation on his performance. You know, the issues that you were referring to and the fact that we have not evaluated him, I think, leads him to a place where no one is certain what's going on. I think that the unsolicited letter from the employees and the fact that Anthony is, you know, finalist in another town is plenty of evidence that no one is certain. The rumor mill is flying around, and we have not, we have not, in the 18 months that he's worked here, we have not reviewed him, we have not done anything, we have not set goals, we have not satisfied any of the requirements that we have as his managers. So we can't wait another six months or a year to give him, to give him a review. We have to follow the legal requirements of providing him with a review that is an open, in an open meeting. And furthermore, I'm not really comfortable with the procedure of having one of, one of the board members give Anthony his review absent the rest of us.
I'm not proposing that.
Okay, well, so, but you, but the policy in the past has been the Chair sits down with Anthony and pro forma gives him his review, and then there's a rubber stamp publicly, which I'm not okay with. I want, I want someone outside the board to assemble all of our individual assessments and provide them all back to us, and then we as a board can sit down with Anthony. Or the Chair can sit down with Anthony and look at that summary, but I want to make sure that that summary is an accurate representation of all of our input.
I don't disagree with any of that, man, I just don't see the big a gulf between what Anthony just said.
Well, but I think what I heard from Chuck was we should wait and not do his review.
No. That's not bad.
Okay, that's what I heard. Is that not the case?
It's not the case. I think, I think we need to do it, but I think that we need to, in fairness to him and to, you know, the town getting the best performance out of him, we need to have clearly defined objectives, expectations, and goals. And in the 18 months, we haven't done that. We haven't given those, aside from identifying our goals, which, you know, we...
We didn't do.
We could get that a rat. So that's, I think that's more important. In order for us to do an evaluation, we need to understand what we're evaluating.
Chuck, can I, if I may, share?
Sorry, there's one, just one more thing. There's nothing in, there's nothing in his contract or in the bylaws that says we have to do the goals first. And, and there's, you know, we got through the budget process without goals. We got through the last year without Select Board goals. There's no reason that we can't provide Anthony with feedback on his performance without goals and objectives. Like objectively, there are things that, that we should talk about, about his, his job performance. So I don't agree that we should wait until we get around to doing goals. We've been waiting since October to do the review, and it dates back before that.
June.
Yeah, June, last June, so. I'm sorry, I'm done now.
Thank you. So, I mean, honestly, if I may, there's core functions of the position that are in black and white. They're in the Select Board regulations and policies, they're in the... Yeah, exactly. So as far as saying we need to get our goals together and then give Anthony direction, the position is in black and white. The core functions of the position are in black and white. If you go through the review process forms, it gives you the categories that pertain to the position. So we as a board have enough information to make an assessment at this time. I don't, I don't know why we're saying we need to have our goals and set expectations and... Honestly, I'm so frustrated. We've been going around in circles about this for a year. We need to complete the forms, and we need to set a date, and we need to do the review process. We just need to get it done.
Procedurally, and I agree with that, I do think there's only, well, I think there is only one thing that we should consider, whether we need to resolve before going on to the execution of the, you know, the review process, and that's the, and I'll try to find a way to phrase it without violating executive session privileges. We have an outstanding unresolved matter there that I think could impact the review process, and it's difficult in my mind to conceive how we could get into the review process absent a resolution of that. And I, you know, board members are obviously talking about, but I decided to put that out there, whether the board thinks it's relevant to resolve that first and then, you know, move immediately on to the review process, or, you know, whatever, just want to get it out there. That remains unresolved.
Right. Okay.
So, in reference to what we talked about, Mr. Glavie, are you suggesting that we go, we resolve that first before we do the final evaluation? Or at least not resolve, but at least carry on what we had started?
We left it hanging, and we need to, and I'm all for doing both quickly because they're overdue, but I think that that needs to be dealt with one way or the other.
Right.
So, both of them, that was scheduling and getting on board. I think the process we have to follow is pretty clear, so, and doing it expeditiously, I'm all on board for that, too. I just think we need to, one way or the other, resolve the other situation.
I guess, I believe we can do the review in parallel with pursuing the other matter.
Okay.
And I think we should, like, make allowances for that, include it in your feedback, and proceed.
Just wanted to get that out there.
Fair enough.
Okay. So, it sounds like we're, we follow the process of individually, not collectively, submit our, our individual evaluations to a third party. Recommend probably Donna Brewer from Myers and Harrington. She's an independent third party, I guess, just, and then she can aggregate or...
Summarize. That's the term that's used in the contract, is a summary of the individual reviews.
Right. And to your point, either sit down and do something with them and then have the public...
Yeah, I think, and I think it is, I think it's, you know, absolutely appropriate to speak to Anthony about the summary prior to the, to the open meeting. And we all, we'll all get to see, you know, what the summary is. I just want to make sure it's an accurate representation of, of all of our opinions.
Not sure if there's any insinuation there, but...
Uh, well, you know, take, I...
No, so just do it, so submit the forms to Donna Brewer, have Donna circulate her summary to each member. Each member reviews it, says, oh gee, it's not referencing this, or it's referencing that, and go back, you know, if there's any feedback like that, if you see, you know, omission or something added, or conjecture, or anything like that, that doesn't align with your personal, now, you know...
What you were trying to get across.
Exactly. You know, and then we agree on the final form, and then we have the review.
Yeah, we could go on a parallel track, be, scout the scheduling.
It's not that complicated. It's just, let's just get it done.
Okay.
So should we set a deadline for submitting our reviews to Donna? Because I know Cindy and I have both already done that.
Sometimes this week is certainly reasonable.
Okay.
That's Friday's date.
I sent a copy into the, into the Chair, but I have a question with the last page. The last page, the summary, there's like five or six different categories. It's almost like we're sitting down with, be Anthony, and I left that part blank because I didn't sit down and do the, is that the proper thing to do?
I think that was the goals that I was referring to. That, that was like the goals and objectives that we, we are supposed to develop along with Anthony in order to like, you know, to come up with goals and performance standards for the next year, which I felt, I left blank as well because we hadn't discussed, we hadn't discussed them with him at all. Yeah, okay.
I just, I just want to make sure that I passed them was the same as everyone else's.
That was how I did it, too.
So submit them to Donna Brewer directly, and I will follow up with Donna. We'll have to circulate some dates for scheduling, because I have to follow up.
Okay, thank you. Good.
All right, next up we have Annual Town Meeting, Article 3, which is bills of prior year.
So we received an email from Alicia with some outstanding bills that we need to bring to town meeting, so there's a handout. It'll be the amendment handout for the Annual Town Meeting, which references those bills that have to be paid.
Mr. Chairman, I have a part of order. I'd like to know, you are the Chair, have you excluded citizens in this town?
Mr. Sanders, no, you're out of order. You're out of order. We, we have the discretion of allowing the public to speak or not to speak on any given topic, and we also have a public input session that we don't, we're not required by law to have, but we do allow it. And we've allowed a lot of discussion tonight. The matter that we were discussing is a delicate matter, and I don't want to open it up, frankly, to an open discussion. So I respectfully ask that you hold your comments, and I'm happy to have, I'm happy to have this conversation with you one-on-one.
Let me ask you a question. Was the town not investigated by the American Civic Living Union about this vote? Was it not?
I don't know, I've never been investigated.
I don't think they do investigation. They were, they were given a complaint by a resident, so.
But they investigated the town because they asked for...
We've got, we've got nothing of that.
I haven't seen anything.
Well, somebody will check into a couple of the Civic Living Union.
Don't believe them.
Because somebody's putting something on Facebook, Mr. Sanders.
Well, I don't have Facebook, so I ain't reading.
Well, somebody's, somebody that you're talking to is telling you something that's written on Facebook.
Well, I understand following procedure, don't make no mistake about that, but I think...
We don't follow parliamentary procedure.
You know, whether you like it or not, you're doing something in public here, and you're telling us as citizens, we have no say about anything. You don't even know what I was going to say.
I don't, but during that particular item on the agenda, I wasn't interested in getting any public input.
And that's why I have a front agenda, because you come up and give us a time to say something, and you got other items on agenda. We don't get a chance to talk on it or speak on it because you have it come out later. You need to do something about that.
Can you, can you, all right.
Can I do what?
I'd love to have a conversation with you about this exact...
I'll have a conversation with you, no problem.
All right. So based upon the, the email from Alicia having to do with MMA invoices, I believe, right?
Correct.
Are those the only things that we need to add?
That's all I'm aware of.
We ready for motion?
Please.
Move the Select Board vote to approve the motion for Article 3 prior year bills for the May 2nd, 2022 Annual Town Meeting, as printed in the draft 2022 Annual Town Meeting handout.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Ms. Napoli. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. All right. Outdoor dining update, Item 9A. Something that I appreciate, all the research that you've put into it, I think Anthony did a lot of work on it as well. Anthony, thank you. There's, I mean, you've probably seen stuff on the news, and, you know, the City of Boston's charging astronomical fees to allow restaurants to remain open and outdoor seating, and I was hoping that we could do something similar to what we did during COVID to try to support our, our local restaurants.
I thought you guys say do something similarly as the Boston.
They're charging them fees?
Seven thousand dollars to have an outdoor seating.
What?
Yeah.
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 They're getting a lot of blowback on it, too.
Yeah, they are. However...
My comment on this was let's make it as easy and inexpensive as possible.
Exactly.
Right, so I'm glad to hear you all feel the same way. But Joe, is Joe the right person to give us a summary, or?
It's just the Governor, actually, we talked about it at the last meeting, but since then, the Governor signed on April 1st the, Chapter 42 of the Acts of 2022 to extend the outdoor dining until April 1st of 2023.
And that includes the cocktails to go and that kind of thing, as long as they're sealed appropriately?
Correct. Yep, everything to go, yep.
We should charge nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I don't know if we want to take any kind of action, I just, the Governor's, the Governor's done it, so I don't think we have to take any action, but just if we wanted to, you know, statement of good faith, take a motion, just so we can let our restaurateurs know that we support them.
Right.
I think last year you took it on a case-by-case basis for...
As long as they follow the proper, yeah, permitting requirements and inspections and whatnot.
Right, you can't extend, extend their occupancy.
So, whatever we've put in place, we'll follow the recommendations of the Governor and extend it through at least April 1st of 2023. We should review it at that time. Is that a motion?
Uh, is it a motion?
It's discussion dependent, but I personally, I'd rather have us take a motion, sure.
Okay, what do you want, what do you want to, to just support or to affirm that we're going to reinforce the, or...
We're going to...
Follow the Governor's guidelines?
Follow the Governor's guidelines and fall back on what we put in place last year, because that, that actually states they have to get the proper permitting and all that kind of stuff.
I move the Select Board vote to
Extend.
extend the town policy on outdoor dining in accordance with the Governor's policy.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Ms. Napoli. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys, appreciate that. 9B we have done, 9C, discussion of 550 King Street. So I...
Yeah, I asked Anthony to put this on the agenda.
Okay.
Just so we can kind of make a decision about what we're going to do about 550 King Street. As a board, as you know, Mr. LaPoli came before us. There was a discussion with the Planning Board as well about using this building possibly for affordable housing. And we had asked Anthony and Town Council to go back to Mr. LaPoli and get more information from him about what it would entail as far as possibly relocating Town Hall to 550 King Street, the legality of doing something like that and whatnot. But I just feel like we need to close that loop. It's kind of been a loose end. So I had asked Anthony to just include this as part of TA, ATA updates, just so that we can decide as a board, how do, how do we want to move forward? And when do we want to move forward? Because we need, we need to make a decision about that.
I have one, I have one opinion. I guess the answer in my mind is it depends. I mean, I'd love to see the, the numbers. I'd like to see more details on, you know, what are the specifics of the place, of the, of the building that we might move into? What will it really cost if we get like a, you know, a plain white box? How much would it cost for us to fit it out? I'm not opposed inherently to, to this process. I do think that it, it's an opportunity to get deeply discounted how, senior housing in a location that's ideal for seniors, frankly. I don't have an objection, you know, just in terms of, of using this building, but there are too many details that are not accounted for yet for me to say absolutely yes. If he wants to show us a proposal with more details in it, yeah, let's, let's evaluate it on its merits.
Right.
There's a lot of things about it that I think make a lot of sense.
I couldn't agree more. I think he has to be able to sit down and tell us, even on this building, a timeframe and what would actually go in here. We haven't seen anything like that. Other than we can do this, we can do that. It's all looks good. I said yes to it before, but we still need an awful lot of background. I said yes to it before, but we still need an awful lot of background information on, on the cost of the move. Is it, is it gonna be a box? Is he gonna give us more? And what happens here? Will that be something that he'll undertake with somebody right away? Or we talked in five, six, seven, eight years after that's done, so it's.
Right, yeah, so many unknown questions.
I'm actually, as you all know, I think it's a bad idea for a lot of reasons, but I, I also, for the, trying to seek some common ground here, I'll, I'll agree with the comments you've all just made relative to the, the, the lack of details we've had. And this isn't something that just popped up. It's been getting studied since last summer. We first, had first blush of it after town meeting in a formal sense where there was a, um, a presentation made at a meeting that Anthony and I went to. But even then, in subsequent, then, we've never once seen anything in writing.
Right.
About the, you know, we had, we had a presentation verbally. We asked, the board asked specifically at that point for details, but they never came. And that, that should be setting up red lights. I mean, I, I think, you know, we are lucky that that's the, that, that company, you know, that family or the developers of that site, I think they're the right one. But that doesn't mean I want to get into business, you know, get the town into business. Maybe we should support what they're trying to do at five fifty King Street and we have been. But that doesn't mean we have to go in that other direction. I'm not gonna, unless the board wants to get into a full discussion of all the, you know, the pros and cons of that prospective proposal that we've never had formally presented to us. But, you know, I'll save that for when we do see it. But I, I, you know, if you're looking for a resolution, I mean, I, I, I haven't been favorable to it from the first blush and the fact that we haven't got any details just confirms what my fears were that, you know, we should, we should be cautious.
I guess what I'm asking the board is, we still want to move forward with getting that information so that we can make an informed decision?
Sure.
Yes or no?
All right, I'm not, I'm not cutting you off.
No, go ahead.
I think that this is an opportunity for us to get affordable and the term deeply discounted affordable housing at this location and also get a new town hall, albeit we're gonna have some skin in the game in that. We haven't been able to determine what the, what it means to have a shell. Some of those conversations have to be had with, I'm assuming the attorney general's office and, and to, you know, to try to get those determinations, I guess. I, I know that the governor's office is extremely excited about, um, the project of five fifty King Street and, um, I believe they're excited about the opportunity for us to create deeply discounted affordable housing in, in combination and, um, because it is the Lapoli companies and Lapoli family and they've demonstrated good faith in other communities and, and we've done, done a lot of, um, developments that have been extremely beneficial to the Commonwealth as a whole. I think that he's in good standing and any project that is brought forward by Lapoli companies is, is going to get a, a lot of good faith from the governor's office, from, from the state. And I think that we can, I would rather see us say, move forward with the proposal. Design what you're going to design. Let's find out how long it's gonna be. When would we potentially be in a new town, a new town offices at five fifty King Street? When would we be able to have people moving into housing in this location? Get some of those questions answered and frankly, I think we're all sitting there wondering, okay, so the shell is, depending upon what other communities have done, it's the, the four walls and, um, but it could be the utilities, the, the electrical and the plumbing and everything else and that can all be stubbed in. In some communities, they've been able to do more than that, where they've been able to build the shell on the inside as well as the outside. But a lot of the, a lot of the finishes and that kind of thing cannot be, have not been approved. I, I'd rather say go forward with it, but it's not, not saying what, we're going to do it because we can't, we can't kind of give a blessing for something that we don't have all the answers on.
Don't have any of them.
Right, so.
But we can, in principle, we can say, we are very interested. I, I, I'll say, I'm very interested in going down the road and seeing how we can create this into deeply discounted affordable housing for our residents. We're talking about it for years, for our senior residents. We've been talking about it for years and we've been talking about and looking at locations to build a new town hall. And that goes back to the whole space needs thing as well. That, that was part of the two fifty-five Great Road, that was part of looking at the Indian Hill property.
Moving some offices into.
We've looked at the whole thing when it came to the space needs study. And I think that this is a project with some benefits beyond where we, if we don't do anything, we're gonna get great benefit from it, but by doing this, we're going to get significantly more benefit. And I, I personally think that we as the leaders of the community and the town fathers.
It's just a. It's true, it's fine. You get a pass.
But we should at least go down that road and try to figure out.
Once again, we, he's had eight to ten months to present us with the proposal. It hasn't happened. I mean, that, that doesn't raise any concerns. And then even if they were a proposal, here's the parts I wouldn't like about it. We just got the town to spend millions at all, state tax paid funds, town funds on the library here. We're just got done with the discussion about our, how excited we are about moving the, the Shattuck Center for Senior Center onsite here because, you know, we're, it's all part of this campus, this town. And now it's like, oh, never mind, we gotta uproot this. Move, move town hall into a retail property by the Westford line at the Common and it borders on Westford, the property does.
Okay, it's, it's a mile down the road.
It's.
So you, so you're against, you're against deeply discounted affordable housing.
No, there are two thousand properties, two thousand properties in town. How come it has to be here?
We have a developer that's gonna do it?
Because they want us in there where we can be the guarantor for all the loans for the development of their property when things go south.
So those are all questions that we need to iron out. So that was the point of bringing this up. So we asked specifically town council and Anthony to work with Mr. Lapoli to get those answers that were all just discussed right here, right? So that we can make an informed decision, so.
That was gonna be my update.
Yeah, sorry, so, oh, do you have info?
So, you know, we've been trying, Tom and I have been, because Lapoli's been traveling for the last two weeks since our, an executive session, so we just haven't been able to nail down a date. But when I talked to him last week and I said, you know, Sal, you gotta commit to next week having a conversation because I think they're to the point. There's a lot of questions that need to be answered and, and we have to understand, you know, some of this stuff. So we, we can present a lot more information so the board can make an educated decision. So he's committed to doing that, so now it's just, um, nearly down some schedules next week, so.
I guess I should let you go first.
That's all right. It was, it was a good discussion.
I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm like, I, I understand your concerns and I think that your, your comments about the, you know, we're the anchor, the anchor store in the new mall, right? Um, are, are totally valid, but it's not like we're gonna approve it without a proposal. So I, I think he's, my guess is he doesn't want to spend time and money on something that he, he feels is gonna be a non-starter with us.
No problem spending time and money on a lot of other things.
Fair enough, but I, I guess all I'm saying is I would look at that proposal on its merits and that's, that's.
That's fair, and I also feel I owe it based on what we've been presented verbally, uh, you know, six months through the rumor mill and then finally in, you know, face to face, that uprooting town hall out of here is not something I've ever contemplated or heard anybody in town say we should be doing. And to do it in a place where we're, um, we go from being owners and the town, good faith and credit and our triple A bond rating and up, we're gonna become a, you know, a tenant or have a piece of the action of somebody's mall where they get, you know, tens of hundreds of millions of dollars.
I don't think that's been decided though.
Yeah, that's the details we're given.
Once again, because we haven't even received anything, we've had nothing in writing since.
Anthony just said he's, we're gonna get that information.
Yeah, but he's had information from us since last July or August, although we didn't find out about it until months later, including building plans for this building. I mean, I don't kind of went out without any, this board even being aware of it. You know, he had conceptual plans, he presented, what was it, back in October or November, Anthony? And yet nothing even followed up in the meeting.
Conceptual plans?
Huh?
I never saw that.
No, 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 we went out to the meeting at the property and walked in, find out it's all about, you know, a unveiling of the, what, five fifty King Street might look like on a scale level and then, and then approaching of the subject of the town hall piece. It's like, where the heck did that come from?
He brought up the town hall, we never saw plans for this though. I don't remember seeing.
He had plans from us, he got our plans.
Okay. I'm, you know, the, I'm, so we can belabor this all night, I guess, and go back and forth. But at the end of the day, we know there's a need for deep affordable senior housing. We know that, we've quantified that, we've researched that, it exists. This building needs some work, we know that. You know, we've had two burst pipes recently, you know.
Problems.
HVAC.
Yeah, the list could go on and on and on. So thank you for following up with Mr. Lapoli and hopefully he'll come back to us with the answers that we need and we can have an informed discussion and make a decision sooner rather than later.
We'll certainly push him to get some answers.
Thank you.
I'll make sure I make that call wherever he is this week traveling.
But I. Given the answers that we're looking for, are you open to deeply discounted affordable senior housing in this location?
Here?
In moving town hall, in moving town hall to five fifty King Street?
What a false choice that is. There's a, we, we just drove, I just drove by a building which we toured already on the senior site tour, which, you know, we didn't find being a, a good, suitable candidate for that. It was until recently been on the market forever. There's other properties up and down the King Street and other places in town, Great Road.
So who's gonna, who's gonna build us deeply discounted? This is.
Why don't we find that out by at least putting out an RFP or something? I don't know why it's all of a sudden an onus on us, like the only place in town you can build deeply discounted housing.
It's not gonna be a place in town, but this is in front of us right now, we've gotten.
Once again, it's not in front of us right now, we do not have a proposal.
I think what's, what's made it attractive to him to consider this property is because, number one, it's a existing structure and number two, it's on a sewer system, which takes away a lot of the cost when, when starting from scratch.
And it is, and it is next to the proposed senior center, it is next to the library, it'd be a fantastic.
And it's right down the street from Pine Tree Park.
I don't know why you can't see that this part is just a cherry on top of the, uh, the sundae for him. Getting this is like.
I don't know why you can't see the need that we have.
We always have a need. I'm sure he would make money as would anybody on this building, but what he really loves is the thing we're handing him, which is the, the idea that, yeah, we're gonna come in and be your, we're gonna be at your mercy on your property with town hall. What?
I don't think that's a case law, I don't think we've even got that far. I agree with you, my first thoughts was town hall should never leave here, that was my first thoughts. But, but when, but when they start talking about the, the housing and the, and the needs that we have here and the possibility of building a new town hall, at least I'm open to something to come back to me, that's all I'm saying.
Oh.
And it was also mentioned in one of the conversations, maybe it isn't this building, maybe it's something else.
Fine, that I'm.
So I'm, I'm, at this point, let's just get something back and see what would they go with it.
Sure. Because of course, you know, one of the other aspects that was a big part of the sales pitch last summer is, hey, because they're a buy and hold entity and when they buy, they hang in there and they're in there for the long haul. Right, and a lot of us went on the tours of three properties last fall, right? Two of the three are already sold.
One of those under a gun when you went on that tour though, right?
No.
Mr. Redbacher.
I, I'm not weighing in on this discussion one way or another.
Smart man.
My, my request is, when it's on your agenda, could you please add that it's talking about this property as well? And include all those residents on Shattuck Street that just signed up because it's affecting them. But it says five fifty King Street is kind of a misnomer if you're talking about this building too. Just.
Point taken.
Good point. And, and, thank you, Mark, because I'm, I'm on this board and I got the packet and there's nothing in here that speaks to that either. So I didn't know any more than you did.
Mr. Martinelli.
Yes, I want to thank Cindy for putting it on the agenda. And I'm sure she put it on the agenda because of our Plaid Board meeting last week. We have a master plan for that property right now, we have to find what's going on there. We asked Mr. Lapoli to put everything he was, how to play anybody on there and he put on where the new town offices potentially are gonna be. We haven't had a chance to act and we talked to him because we wanted your board to weigh in first. But we're looking for deeply discounted, um, senior housing out there, thirty to forty percent AMI. The only way you're gonna get it is like every other city town around us has done it, partnering with a developer. He's willing to partner with us. We're gonna talk about density with him and that's what's going to give us the ability to renovate this property, hopefully for the units, maybe not, but I agree one hundred percent that we're not there yet and that obviously your board needs more input, but we need to start the conversation.
The solution is right there on the map, where it has the block, where they're gonna put the town offices, that we're gonna become hostages to, put the deeply affordable housing there instead of building us an eight million dollar shell.
He's not gonna spend twenty-two million dollars and then have to develop.
But he can do it here.
He can do it here because we're, we're gonna give him a building, we're going to give town, so we're gonna, the infrastructure's already here, he's not building, building from scratch, that's how you.
Well, he's gonna get sewer down there too.
There's gonna be sewer down there, but he, he's not gonna spend his own money to, you have to have some skin in the game to get deeply affordable. And that's what, we can't really discuss it until we get some direction from the, from the select board where it's going with that. And that's why it needs to be discussed with, by your board, to give us some direction where we're going with that. So hopefully sewer around it later.
How many, how many pages of information did they submit to you for their master plan?
You'd have to check with Mark, we've got hundreds of pages.
Okay, we haven't got one about this project.
You're not the master plan.
No, 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 I'm trying, but if this is so important and integral to things, we've got nothing, not one page of information on it.
In fairness, we, you, myself and, and Anthony were at the meeting with Mr. Lapoli and you were dead set against it and you basically shot it down right there, that's why.
I obviously didn't shoot it down because it's on discussion right here tonight. You can hear there's interest in the board, I am against it, Mark, yes, but that's, I'm only one.
Because we have to have it on the map screen. If we don't have it on the map screen, we can't discuss it, that's why.
You had hundreds of pages of information, yet there's nothing on that, you know, which is fine, I mean, we didn't get anything either.
It's not our jurisdiction, it's yours, it's your building. It's on your.
You said it was on the map.
It's, there's a drawing of where it's gonna be on the map.
Okay.
Okay, that's there, but no detailed instruction because we haven't heard from you whether we can even talk about it yet.
Well, obviously you can talk about it, you already did.
No, we didn't, we just put it on the map, put it on the maps, the plan map book was there, a placeholder, that's all it was. We never even discussed it, really, just talked about a potential to put offices there, that was it. So anyway, I do agree one hundred percent, you need way more information than what anybody's got. I just want to keep the process going forward, that's all I'm trying to do. Because these seniors deserve deeply, they, they, absolutely, they deserve to be able to live and live.
He, he didn't come in the door talking about anything to do with seniors until it came up in the context of getting this and moving town offices in there.
It came to.
No, no, I know it's true because I was in those meetings.
He's outside of the meetings.
Yeah. He talked to us out there many meetings ago.
With the first meeting, he came before you. We were here and he spent twenty, twenty minutes or so outside with us, asking us about senior needs.
Oh, yeah, we had those conversations too, but not about this, this building.
Not, he looked at this building, didn't he?
Yeah, he was counting the, he was counting the windows in the building to see how many.
We phoned him with that, we had two needs, deeply affordable house, housing for seniors and the senior center. Those were two, the two issues the seniors were dealing with. And he said, where are you gonna put the senior center?
And we said over there.
Right over there, see those sheds? That's where it was gonna be then.
Yeah.
But that's how, that was a long time ago. But he had the interest, he approached us.
All right. Mr. Sanders.
Actually, I think Cindy actually pushed a lot of the interest that he's had in doing things with the senior housing and other, other affordable housing needs on him because we were involved in conversations with him before he'd even fleshed out what his proposal was. So absent this building, I would say the topic of housing was pushed by the town on him as well.
Right, and he was very receptive and he's been always forthcoming with asking about the town, what are the needs in the town? And certainly, you know, senior affordable housing was.
Right, but prior to that, I think he told us he'd never done affordable housing before.
Yeah, he said it's usually not part of his business model, so.
Sorry, Mr. Sanders, go ahead.
George Sanders, six seven two three George. I, I just think that, I, I saw a kind of. of agree with, uh, Paul there with regards to, I don't recall anything saying about this building becoming housing and the town hall moving up to 50 King Street, 550 King Street up there, on the, on the space committed was, they wanted this complex here at Shattuck Street where they had the, the senior center, the library, and we had, uh, the town hall here, everything was gonna be close knit here, we could put it over there in bank right, they wanted to put three units over there and somehow now he's saying that he wants to move the town hall up there and he wants to take this building because first of all, uh, gutting it out, uh, it's not causing, putting the foundation in him, putting it out, there's way to come closer to put a building in and for him to come in, first of all, he should have been submitting this information, uh, to the planning board and it should have been in stages, come in stages as to what he wants to do in this town and buy a ticket up there and I say that if he's talking about wanting to gut this building, the town give it to him and turn around and he's gonna put us up there, I suggest that you start and make sure that you make contact with all the residents in this town about you want to switch out of this building as a town hall and move it up in 550 because this guy's gonna give us something up here, we're gonna give him this building down here. I don't quite understand why he's so interested in this other than that, yes, he'll make money in this building, don't question about it, but that was not talked about as a part of 550 and I wrote him a letter a few days after he came here and presented himself to this elect one meeting here, I wrote him a letter, wrote a three-page letter and I told him about senior housing, in-depth housing in 550 up there, but nothing was ever said about moving town hall to that location, thank you.
Any comments from the board?
No.
Move on to the minutes, March 28th.
I believe, no comments from me?
Any comments?
No.
Move the select board vote to approve the meeting minutes of March 28th, 2022.
Second.
Move and second by Ms. Knopf, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ms. Anamos. Before we adjourn?
Uh, when's our next meeting?
25th. Join appointments.
Oh, right.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Made in second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Folks, we are adjourned, our next meeting is on the 25th, have a happy holiday weekend and stay safe, thanks.